I'm on time for me.
Oh, my God, you're killing me.
I have another one. Do you want me to go get three?
Okay, my last one just.
There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item Three, which happens to be right after the bunch of pages. So if anybody has a public comment they would like to make, please go off the cards right now. And if you would all join us, I think, and we start in religion. Ladies and gentlemen, allegiance?
Yeah.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have a couple, one or two, I guess. All right, so at this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone and state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from an appropriate administrator. We have one. It's Monahart.
Evening.
Yeah.
It's Monahart. Go find me at six eight sixty Cascade Road. I just wanted to offer my thanks for two things. The first is that you made this an open meeting. It's incredibly helpful to be able to see the candidates that are being interviewed before selections are made. This definitely helps for me for communication standpoint. So it is very much appreciated, at least for me, and hence, for everyone else, if I was out there seeing that they are listening. The second thing that I appreciate as well is that you've chosen to hold these after business hours, allowing for a wider range of public to come should they choose to. So again, I appreciate you for both of those decisions. Good day.
Thank you. All right. At this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you very much for your input. We are now up to candidate interviews. We have one tonight, and I think we'd be so kind as to explain the format to anybody who may not have been here on a previous night.
Sure. Welcome back to most of you and welcome to the newbies here tonight. Again, there's two forums over to this table back there, both with the Michigan leadership logo in the upper corner. Forum here is really input and some questions you might have that the board will have access to and take time to read. The second sheet, you have questions you would like to ask individual candidates that you may use in the second round. Please submit those, and I'll keep track of those, and we'll see if we can incorporate those into the second round of interviews. Tonight's interview should take about seventy-five minutes. We only have one tonight instead of the two, so a little different process. After we get done with the first interview, the board will take the time to review the input that was provided, and then they're going to take some time to go back over their own individual notes on these candidates and so forth. Then they will start a deliberation process of trying to select who they would like to have come back as our final candidates. There is no set number on that. I want you to understand that I don't tell them it has to be two. I don't tell them it has to be three. I don't have to tell them that it's one. It's totally their decision, and then more of the process from there. Second interview is we do have scheduled for the nineteenth of the month, and we will have an open house prior to that, so you can be able to talk to the candidates personally a little bit as well. So any other questions from the board? Okay, I'll go get a can.
Thanks. Go ahead. No, no, no. You're key. Just the guy.
I would like to take this time to introduce our fifth candidate, final one, Dr. Gary Kinzer, who comes to us serving as a superintendent in Mason.
Well, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to welcome you to Forest Hills Public Schools. I'll take a second to explain the format here. The interview will take approximately seventy-five minutes. At the end, you will have a chance to ask us questions that you may have, and you will also have the opportunity to make a closing statement if you would like. I also, from experience, know that that microphone pops a bit if you get too close to it, but people can't hear you because you're too far, so there might be a little adjustment period.
Will you give me some feedback if I need it?
Absolutely. You'll know. All right. Choosing our next superintendent is a responsibility of critical importance to this board. We know that being the superintendent of a K through twelve public school is an enormous and unique job. We need to find the right person for this moment and for the future to lead our district. We are excited to learn as much about you as we can, and we appreciate the input that we have gotten and are continuing to receive from our community, staff, family, students. And so I'm going to just jump right in with the first question, which is, not so much a question, but it's, we've already had a chance as a board to review your application materials, but the audience has not. So could you please briefly describe your background and share what causes you to be interested in this position at this point in your career?
Absolutely. First of all, thank you very much for allowing the community to be here. I really would like to take just a brief moment to just tell you all a little bit about my family, because if you get me, maybe I get my family too. So my wife is a former educator. She was a teacher and a principal and now serves as vice president of the Capital Region Community Foundation, and I do have two children. My daughter Maggie is a junior at Miami University, and I have a son who is, my son Ryan is a junior at Okemos High School. So this is year thirty-one for me as a public educator, and it's been a long journey with many stops along the way, and I've learned and grown in each of them. So I started my career on the east side of the state as an English teacher at Inlee City High School in Eastern Fair County. One year, moved on to Okemos Public Schools where I served for twenty-three years. So I started as a high school English teacher and coach, did that for five years, then served as a middle school assistant principal and athletic director for seven, and then eleven years as an elementary superintendent. So after eighteen years of administrative service in Okemos, I moved on to the Novi Community School District in Oakwood County, where I served as assistant superintendent of Human Resources for five years, and now I am in my second year as superintendent in Mason Public Schools. Along the way, earned a couple of advanced degrees, a master's degree in K-12 educational administration, as well as doctorate degree in educational leadership, both from Michigan State University. I do have a bachelor's degree from Michigan as well, so kind of a, I support both. So I really have a great job. I'm not job searching. I love what I do in Mason Public Schools. I'm blessed to be in a great district that's very supportive, and I'm interested in this job because I feel that it gives me the opportunity to impact on a bigger scale. I have twenty-eight years of experience in Okemos and Novi, communities that I think have a lot of similarities to Forest Hills. I feel very comfortable in an environment that's rigorous, where parents and the board and district have very high expectations. That's where I've been successful for my career, and this is a place where I think I've been very happy and successful. So I really welcome the opportunity to pursue this position here.
Dr. Kinzer, given your research and what you know of our district already, what do you believe are the two or three most critical long-term priorities that we would need to address? How would your background and skills help us address those particular priorities?
So I want to start just by saying that I'm not a huge fan of this question because it implies that I know enough about Forest Hills to make that judgment, and it would take, really being immersed in the culture of Forest Hills Public Schools, to really understand those issues and challenges. So these are surface-level observations. I think it's important to know that. But one of the things that has stood out to me is I see a district of over nine thousand students with three separate attendance areas, and I think that each of those attendance areas, the staff and families that make up each attendance area have tremendous pride in where they attend school, yet this is a large school district. So I think that there is an inherent challenge in really developing an overall district culture that's Forest Hills Public Schools, that honors the three attendance areas and all they bring to the table, but also works together for a stronger district as a whole. So I think that's one. Another observation that I've made is that housing in Forest Hills is a significant challenge. So maintaining our student enrollment population in the face of very expensive housing, I think, is a challenge. I don't pretend that I have great answers for that, but I think it's one that we have to plan for, and we have to be mindful of the fact that young families may have difficulty in moving to Forest Hills, given the costs. I would say those are two challenges that I think are things that we'll need to plan for moving forward.
Thank you. Effective and timely communication is vital to the success of a school district. Would you describe for us the type of communication that students, staff, and parents should expect to receive?
So when I think of communication, I divide it into categories. One, I think, consistent, almost routine communication. So what parents, staff, students can expect on an ongoing, regular basis. In Mason, we have a communications team that I work closely with regularly. We have a weekly communication that goes on Wednesday evenings, going out shortly, actually, tonight, and our parents and community members know to expect it. So that's an example of routine communication, and we work to develop that so that it's consistent, so that it provides the information that parents and other members of our community need on an ongoing, regular basis. So I think that's an example of just consistent communication. However, we all know that there are plenty of times when communication is also needed for non-routine matters. So something comes up, and the community needs to know. They need information. They need explanation. So our team also comes together as needed to work on that, and quite honestly, we open a Google Doc, we start drafting, we work together. I don't think any superintendent is going to be as effective as necessary working independently when communication needs to happen. So a team approach where we work together to be timely, to make sure that the relevant and necessary information is shared appropriately is really important. So those are, I guess, what I would call traditional, you know, email types of communication. Social media is another opportunity. I will admit to being a relative newcomer to the social media world. I try to live up to some of the standards that my superintendent colleagues set on Twitter, and I don't do very well, but it's an ongoing effort, I try. Additionally, you know, I use video, so I'm not comfortable at all in front of a camera, but I try my best to fake it, and it's a good way, in three minutes, to get a really important message. For example, just before the holidays in Mason, I did about a three-minute video with a team from our ISD about progress towards implementation of our strategic plan, and we sent it out to the district and community, and I think, you know, several thousand people have seen it, so I think that's very effective communication as well.
Thank you.
Thanks. What do you think are the unique challenges of leading a district with, as you mentioned, three high schools, three attendance areas, and how would you address some of those challenges more specifically?
So I think you're speaking to culture, really, and I really think my role is, one of my primary roles as superintendent is to help develop the culture that we want in our school district. And in my role in Novi as assistant superintendent, that was a task that fell to me, so I did a lot of work in developing an intentional plan for how we can build culture. I think it involves engaging staff to start with. They need voice, and they need to have a clear opportunity to help inform decision-making. And when their voice is heard and they can see evidence of action planning around the information we obtained, I think that helps build culture. So with the three attendance areas, I would want all of our staff members to have a voice. I think they can speak to what they value in their own attendance area and what they value as being a member of the Forest Hills family as a whole, and we can honor the culture of each of our attendance areas and build a very positive culture as a school district as well at the same time.
Thank you. Can you give us an example of a successful educational initiative or program you have initiated in your career and what have been the results?
I'm going to go back a ways. I was an elementary principal. This was about 2008, and this was in the early days of response intervention. And as a principal, I worked diligently with teachers on my staff, as well as other elementary teams in my district and county, to build really strong systems of support that really gave us the opportunity to meet the needs of all students. Previous to that, there were no real answers. So unfortunately, I think students were landed in the special education role unnecessarily. We built systems, so we were able to support students, first in reading, later in math and behavior, and we were able to help kids grow without unnecessary barriers. And I think, as I reflect, that's probably one of the most meaningful accomplishments in my career. It was about a ten-year process. I would add that I think pandemic has had a corrosive impact on systems, and we really have to prioritize rebuilding systems. Certainly, this is not a comment on Forest Hills. I don't, I can't speak to that, but I can speak to my experience in other districts, and I know that there is a tension needed to ensure that our systems are meeting the needs of our students.
Thank you. What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present in tough financial times? What are your top three priorities?
Do you have a second?
Yeah. Yep, absolutely. What opportunities do you believe budget limitations present? And then what are your top three priorities?
Okay. So the opportunity really is prioritization, and one thing that I've noticed from your website is I don't see evidence of a strategic plan. So it seems to me that that's work that needs to be done, and having a strong strategic plan that has been informed by many voices and then supported by the Board of Education gives us a roadmap. It helps us prioritize, and when we are faced with challenging budget times, we have to prioritize. We have to ensure that resources are being allocated in the most appropriate places, and a plan is the only way to do that. So I think that's a priority in this district. However, I would also add that I don't think I could effectively lead a strategic plan until I had the opportunity to build some relationships, to build some relational trust with members of our team. So I don't know that it would be something I would take on immediately, but it would be a priority, you know, in the short term. So I think that's just the first part of the question. So I guess the three priorities, do you mean specifically to budget?
Yes.
So I think supporting instruction, you know, that is our mission. That's why we're here, to impact student learning. So ensuring that we are allocating appropriate resources to core instruction and systems of support, big priority. Safety and security. My first year as an assistant principal was nineteen ninety-nine, and we were coming off the Columbine. So I've never known an administrative position where school safety wasn't a priority. We have to make sure that we are doing all that we can to keep our kids safe, both physically as well as socially, emotionally. So I think that's a second priority. And then a third, I guess I'll go with staffing. So whether that be attracting, retaining, developing our staff. So I loved my time as a human resources director and working really closely with the recruiting end of staff, but more importantly, the supporting and developing staff that I got to do in that role. I guess it's probably my favorite part of my role now, too. So I guess those would be my top priorities.
Thank you. All right, now it's my turn. With respect to a district's planning process or setting direction, how do you propose we involve our stakeholders, the parents, staff members, students, community members?
So I'm going to, I'm going to take that to mean strategic planning. So the process needs to be informed by many voices. So initially, I think information can be gathered in a number of ways. Certainly, a simple survey gives everyone the opportunity to have voice. Focus groups can give people an opportunity to participate in a more personal way. So I think that's the beginning part of the process. Then, a fairly large committee of administrators, teachers, parents, community members, and students come together to really make important decisions based on the data and information that was obtained in the first part of the process to chart a course for the district. That is a collaborative process, and it's critical that it be that because at the end of the process, we need to have a product that everyone supports and buys into, and that's our roadmap moving forward. If the work that we're doing doesn't clearly fall into our strategic plan, then we have to ask why we're doing it. So that's the direction a school district needs, and I think especially a larger school district, very important that we develop a strong process and build a plan that will serve us for perhaps the next four or five years.
I just keep getting calls from my child, and I'm actually wondering if there's an emergency, because, I mean, it's just over and over and over. I got lost for a second there. I'm so sorry. Please describe your leadership experiences, working with diverse constituents, social, cultural, economic diversity, and tell us about how you've worked to develop educational equity and a culture of inclusion for all.
Okay. So first of all, I can't assume that you know very much about the demographics of any of the districts that I've worked in, so I'll take just a moment. So Okemos Public Schools is a very ethnically diverse school district, roughly forty percent Asian. You know, it's two or three miles outside of East Lansing, very much a university community. So very diverse, and as a teacher and later an administrator, and I, you know, I didn't grow up in a diverse community, so this was a new experience for me, and I did not realize my privilege initially. And about 2012, after a strategic planning process in Okemos, we identified developing cultural competency as a priority, and that was my own, the beginning of my own personal journey, and it was a whole lot of reflection and recognizing that, you know, I, at the time, I remember thinking, well, I'm colorblind. I treat all my kids the same. Well, I need to understand the story that every child brings to school with him or her, and that was a long process, and I was learning it and leading it at the same time. So I think that's the first step, and I'm still on that journey, I'll add. My doctoral program at Michigan State University, equity is the dominant theme of the program, so it was a great opportunity to engage in really high-level research and learning with amazing cohort members and professors around these topics. So that gave me kind of a theoretical piece to go along with my everyday practical experience. So then, in 2017, I moved on to Novi, and I didn't believe it possible at the time, but Novi's more diverse than Okemos, a majority Asian district. But a different, it had its own unique differences, and from the HR seat and working through a pandemic, equity conversations became part of our decision-making on a regular basis. We needed to ask, is the decision we're making equitable for all kids? So move forward. Now I'm superintendent of a community that is not so obviously diverse. It's rural America, and one of the reasons I was drawn to the position in Mason was it was very obvious to me in my research that the district was committed to equity. So sometimes I'm surprised with how far we're able to move, and, you know, like, next week is Inclusion Week in Mason. So I have a close friend who's a superintendent in Wayne County, and one of his teachers developed an Equity Week plan for their school district, and we're emulating it. So I'm really excited to see what comes of that. But we, you, I have a director of student support who sits next, his office is right next to mine, and that equity conversation happens on an ongoing basis in Mason, too. It looks different. We have different forms of diversity in Mason, but I would say our biggest challenge is socioeconomic equity, and we really look at our policies and practices and how they impact students, and we think about equity every day.
Thank you. What has been the most unpopular administrative decision you've had to make, and how did you handle the reaction to this decision?
Okay, I'm going to just take a tiny bit of liberty with that question because I guess ultimately it wasn't entirely my decision, but I had to own it. So this is a COVID example. So I'm assistant superintendent of Human Resources in Novi in the summer of 2020, and we made the decision that we were going to offer in-person instruction, and that was a major challenge with our staff because it was inclusive. So as, in my role, working directly with our teachers and administrators, working with them to help them feel safe was a significant challenge and one that I'm really proud of the outcome. We were fortunate that we only had maybe forty percent of our district that chose the option, so social distancing became much easier, but it was still a leap, and we had no real issues. With contact tracing that we were doing at the time, there really were no spreads that happened at school. Students were able to attend safely in person in a cohort mile. Teachers became comfortable, and it was a culture builder for our school district. So what started out as a really difficult decision, and I had the responsibility of working directly with our staff to implement, became something that helped bring us closer together in the end.
Thank you. What role does the school district play in student mental health?
What role does the school district play in student mental health and wellbeing? We lived through this a little other, please describe some of your experiences in those areas.
So I was an elementary principal for 11 years and I moved on to my assistant superintendent position. And during the pandemic, we had an elementary principal in Novi, she, she had to retire because her dream job became available to her. So we needed a, an interim elementary principal. And not surprisingly, there were not a lot of volunteers. So I ended up doing that. So maybe four years after I had left a principal position, I was now back in an interim elementary principal position, a year into the pandemic. And I would say two elementary schools, my, my school in Oakhamus and the school in Novi, demographically very similar. But the evidence of the pandemic and the impact on the wellbeing of our students was very obvious to me. I saw behaviors that I'd never seen before. So that gave me firsthand experience with impact. And I believe our kids are still recovering. The world is not the same place. My, my own two children are still recovering. So we have the responsibility as a school district to meet the needs of our kids and the needs are far more than academics. We have to make sure our kids are okay. And when I think of what we expect our teachers to do every day, it's an overwhelming responsibility. So I think there's support for staff that plays into this so that they're able to carry that out. It's making sure we have systems in place that support our kids in a lot of different ways. It's making sure that we have adequate staffing and staffing of mental health professionals is a constant challenge. But we spend a lot of time and energy and other resources to make sure that we have systems in, in place that will support our kids. In order to do that, we also have to support our staff because they have to do this work on the front lines every day. And I'm grateful that I had that interim principal experience because it, for about three months, I was able to step back into that world. You know, now I visit schools on a regular basis, but it's not the same as being there all day every day. So, you know, I think that it's a good reminder that we've gotta put ourselves in the position of our staff members and really understand what they do with kids every day. Because it is far more than just teaching them the academic skills they need to be successful.
Great answer. Dr. Kenzer, what strategies do you use to recruit and retain talented and diverse teaching and administrative staff?
Okay, so I, I think that I, I have to be very honest about the first part. I don't know that anyone is, is having a lot of success in attracting diverse staff. The statistics are pretty clear that there's not a lot of diversity. I mean, when, when we look at the makeup of, you know, America's teaching force is largely homogenous. So we know that, but again, we look for, we look for forms of diversity where we can, but the most important part to me is attracting talent and developing it and retaining and supporting it. And I think part of that is telling our story. And I believe that Forest Hills Public Schools has an amazing story to tell. And part of the job is attracting as much interest from talented people as possible by telling our story. Had the opportunity to chat with Elizabeth while I was waiting and I can see that we have a great person in that role to help that work. Grateful for that. And so I think we start with that and then we build a culture. I, I've mentioned culture a couple times already. But developing the culture we want is a huge priority. And it does not, it's not meant to suggest that there's not already an amazing culture in this district. But I would spend time trying to get a, a feel for that culture and then try to push the right buttons and support staff to help us get where I think we can have the kind of culture where this is an absolute destination district, where people wanna, wanna come to. And then it is about supporting our people so that they don't ever want to leave. We have to make sure our people do their roles and they need to know that they've got the support of our administration to do the work in this area. And that's not just our teachers, that's all of our, of our team.
Yeah, thank you so much for that. We believe in offering quality programs in everything we do from the FINARS, CTE, athletics, all of our academic programming. But how do you strike a balance between developing curriculum and opportunities for all of our kids that equitably meet their needs, but still maintaining quality in that wide variety of programming?
Did you say maintain quality or equality?
Quality. So offering things that, that all kids are interested in, in an equitable way, but maintaining quality in those programs.
So it feels as if you're talking about more than just academics. I think it's the overall program of the district. So certainly in the classroom, I think it starts with systems of support that meet the needs of all students. At the high school level and middle school level, it's about making sure that we're meeting the needs of, you know, the, the numbers don't lie, an overwhelming percentage of students in this school district go on to four-year universities, but not all of our schools. So making sure that we have appropriate programming to meet the needs of all of our students, even if college may not be the best next step. So certainly CTE, looking at the trades, looking at opportunities that might exist in emerging technologies. But there are many paths forward and we have to try to program for all of the kids. So I think that's, that's an academic answer, but I, a school district's much more than that. So making sure that extracurricular programming is diverse and highly valued regardless of the activity. I know firsthand, because I happened to attend a state championship football game when my Mason Bulldogs took it on the chin from Forest Hill Central, that athletics are valued in this community, but I'm confident that the arts are as well. I'm, I'm confident that robotics and all sorts of different activities are available to our kids. It's difficult to do everything, but we have to try to make sure that we have the opportunities available for our students that help enrich their school experience. I think that's the whole purpose of extracurriculars. They are an extension of the classroom, so how can they enrich the school experience for kids? And that needs a lot of different variety because we have so many students with different interests. The last piece that I think you brought up was quality. And that's where it gets really challenging. And when you spread yourself very thin, it's very challenging to make sure that we're maintaining quality standards. I think the, the best way to do that is to have great people running our programs. And again, it ties into the culture of the district. When you have a culture of excellence in that, I'm confident that you do because I don't think you can achieve the levels of success you have without it, then you build those into all the programs you're offering. You know, there's a standard that a Forest Hills program should always meet.
Thank you. Please describe your experience with millennial bond sinking funds. Were these experiences successful, why or why not?
So in the summer of 2020, in Novi, and we passed the previous fall, I think about $190 million bond, which was lovely then. And our assistant superintendent of finance and operations left the district to take a position in another district. She was the lead person in running the bond. And, you know, I had a couple years of experience in central office at the time and my boss looked at me and said, "Looks like it's you." And I said, "Great." So I learned a ton about how bond, how bond work happens, working with our architects, our construction team, our owners' reps, on a near daily basis to implement projects, support work. I'm actually visiting, I have a, a trip to Northville Schools on Friday to see their inclusion week. On the way, I'm gonna go see some of those projects in Novi that I had to hand in in the early days and they're all finished. So I learned a whole lot about how to support bond work. This was after the bond had been passed. So now in Novi, or I'm sorry, Mason, we are in the last final months of a 2017 bond that was passed long before my arrival and most of the work done long before my arrival. However, series three of the bond has been since my arrival and it's the less glamorous portion of this bond. In, in series one, we redid all of our elementary schools, other than the, the one that we completely rebuilt in series two. And then series three is all infrastructure, safety, security, HDA. So we're completing that work and we've just begun planning for a 2025 bond. So now I'm, I'm the, the early phase of planning the work. We selected an owner's rep and we're beginning to take a look at our, our facilities assessment, our, our opportunity to capture bond revenue and how we might move forward. And we have a lot of work to do because while we've been successful in redeveloping our elementary schools, our middle school, our high school, we do a lot of work. So that will be the focus of our 2025 bond. Every district that I've worked in, perhaps not English City in the 90s, but other than that, have had sinking funds. So certainly utilization of, of sinking funds to have a clear plan for repairs of facilities, very important. Always been something that has been a common practice in, in every position that I've been in. So having that to make strategic decisions to make sure your buildings are in the best condition possible, very important. Was there an operations piece to this question too, or was it just bond and sinking fund?
Millennial bond, I was thinking.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Can you please provide us with an example of a time in your career when you made a mistake, received constructive feedback, and were asked to take corrective action? What process and communication plan did you implement and what was the outcome?
So this is a, this is gonna seem like a pretty small example, but it was impactful to me because the feedback that I received came from someone whose opinion meant a great deal to me. So it was a simple committee and I was an elementary school principal and we were working on, it was special scheduled. So it seemed small. It wasn't small to me. So I was a pretty experienced elementary principal. There were a lot of teachers and other administrators in the committee who didn't have as much experience as me. And I came in with my mind made up of how we needed to move forward in developing a district's special schedule. And I didn't listen well. I behaved as if I had all the answers. And in my mind, I, I knew what we should do, but the process didn't go well because I undermined it. So superintendent at the time, someone who I worked with for 20 years, who is, you know, one of my most significant mentors, pulled me aside and said, "You crashed this meeting. You had the ability and the opportunity to help us get where we needed to go, but you, you did the opposite. So how are we going to fix this?" So I remember initially crafting an email that I sent to the team, but following it up with visits. You know, Oakhamus is a small enough district, you know, I knew the teachers, even if they weren't in my building. And I visited those teachers and acknowledged that, you know, my, my role in the process was not what it should have been. And, you know, I think it, it helped me build stronger relationships with people by acknowledging that I didn't behave the way I should have. And it was a great learning experience for me. And by the way, there, I probably could have selected about 100 other, you know, there are plenty of opportunities for me to make mistakes.
Great, thanks. How would you, in your research so far, what you know of Forest Hills, how would you evaluate the climate and culture of our district as it is now? And how does superintendent help to improve climate and culture?
Okay, so I'm gonna get into a little more detail than what I, what I've said initially. I would, I, I don't really have much of an opinion of the climate and culture of this district right now because I just don't believe you can have an informed opinion without immersing yourself in the district. So it would be very high priority to really experience Forest Hills Public Schools. And I think that's how you understand or begin to understand climate and culture. That means ti- and I guess what I'm really, I'm, I'm hoping that I have an opportunity to talk about a 90-day plan with you at some point. I would be spending time in the first three months and really the first year in buildings, in departments, talking to administrators, in classrooms, trying to find ways to interact with parents, community members. That's how you understand climate and culture and it takes time. Once I begin to, to develop some sense of what the culture feels like to me, that's when that whole engagement part begins. This is when we need to find a tool to give teachers and other staff members voice. But that voice is only, that's only a useful part of the process if they then see action. If their voice informs action, that's how culture grows. So that would be the plan, is to experience this district every day. I'm, I'm not much of a sit in my office kind of guy. You know, sometimes I have to do that, but, you know, I, I visit classrooms and I joke with kids, "Why are you here?" And I'm like, "Well, the truth is, I really have to go back to my office and do things that really aren't that much fun, so why would I not do the fun part?" And so I spend time in classrooms observing instruction and learning. I spend time in principals' offices building relationships. I do my best to try to make myself available to parents, although I understand how busy parents are and sometimes talking to me is not their highest priority. But it's about relationships, it's about interacting with people, and then it's about engaging. And it's about giving voice to those people who are part of the organization and do hard work every day and them seeing that their voice, their voice informs action. That's how you build culture.
Nice, thanks. Would you please explain to us what your plan would be to implement a strategic plan?
So the first thing I would probably do is, is call my friend Dave over there and see if MLI has the ability to support the work. So there are great organizations in Michigan, but the Michigan Leadership Institute is, you know, one that I hold in high regard because it's exclusively former superintendents who have done this work. So in Mason last year, one of Dave's counterparts supported our strategic planning work. I've, I've described a little bit of the process already, but it began, we, we already had a tremendous amount of data. I'm blessed to have a, a person on my team who is a better than data guru and she has just all sorts of organized information from the past five years. We were able to start with that. We developed a survey, we, we organized some focus groups, then we put together about a 50-person committee. We really engaged with the data we had. We had great conversation over five, six evenings. We developed a mission and a vision. We identified four focus areas for our school district. And then, once we had done that, that was the committee's work. We formed smaller committees in each focus area to develop a much more detailed plan. We presented that plan to our Board of Education in July. It was approved in August. And now the work we do in Mason Public Schools every day is directly supportive of our strategic plan. And if it isn't, we ask ourselves why we're doing it. We've, we've committed to an implementation tool where we can show our progress to our community. You know, I, I'm not at, at all above borrowing things from people. That Public Schools has supported our efforts in this. Go on their website, they've got an amazing tool where you can track progress towards implementation of their plan. Ours will be live this spring. The work of our district is to make our strategic plan a reality in the next five years. That is what we've committed to do. So that's our work every day and, you know, there, there is no binder on a shelf strategic plan in Mason Public Schools.
Mr. Gold, with strategic plans, when I say that, one question, Dr. Kenzer. Superintendents are often faced with the challenge of making decisions when there is no clear right answer.
no clear right answer and members of the community are split on their way to head forward. Please talk about a time when you were faced with a difficult decision where you knew there would be a group of people unhappy with your decision, no matter what you chose to do, all the time. How did you go about making that decision, getting people on board with the direction you determined was best?
Is it your intention that this question be exclusively a superintendent, from my superintendent experience, or is that not important?
Unnecessarily.
Okay. So I guess I've been blessed that I've yet to experience a completely divided community in Mason. So I don't think I have a, I don't have an example that's a superintendent example. Let me give you a principal example. So in, I think, 2010 in Oakham, this was at the tail end of the recession and we had lost a tremendous amount of students. And at the time, we had six elementary schools and we knew we couldn't support six elementary schools. We had elementary schools with 108 students in them, you know, and they were just not economically viable anymore. So superintendent at the time put together a process of how we would make a decision about what to do. And at the end of a very long process, we made a very challenging decision to go to our elementary schools and redistrict the rest of our population. And my school at the time was the highest socioeconomic school in a pretty affluent community. And overnight, it was going to become the lowest. So I had parents concerned. And we worked very hard to build a new culture for what was to become High West Elementary School. And it really was amazing to see how quickly that came together once we had teachers that we had taken on from close schools and students. And the work that we were able to do to build a better school with a more diverse population. So it didn't take long. And the divided parent population was mostly out of fear. And once they saw reality, it was very easy to move past. So that was a very successful accomplishment, you know, one that I'm really proud of. And when I left High West in 2017, I was very proud of the school that it was at the time.
Thank you. What is the biggest risk you have taken to do what's right now?
I guess I'm not sure this is the biggest risk, but it's the example I'm going to give you. So I was a brand-new elementary principal, like 35-years-old, high school teacher, middle school assistant principal, had never spent a day in elementary school and I was principal. So my fourth-grade teachers came to me very early in the summer after I was given the job and said, "We have a problem and it's going to be a really difficult problem." We have this tradition, fourth-grade camp. And fourth-grade camp was an institution at High West Elementary School. The previous principal created it 15 years earlier and it was one of those traditions that families lived for when it was their turn to go to fourth-grade camp. But the teachers came to me and said, "We can't do this anymore. We gave up 50 hours of instruction last year to plan for camp and we have far too much to cover with our students. We cannot keep doing this." So after I paused and thought I was probably going to be fired, decided, "Okay, we're not going to do fourth-grade camp." This was September of my first year. And so we organized a meeting, well, first of all, I said to the teachers, "Okay, what are we going to do in place of fourth-grade camp? You can't just not do something. What are you going to do?" They said, "We already have a plan." And they had a much more manageable but impactful student experience to take its place. So we set up a meeting the night of open house and for fourth-grade parents to talk about camp. And of course, Dale thought it was a meeting to talk about planning. And I had to get up in front of them and say, "I'm sorry, but we are not having fourth-grade camp this year. Instead, we're going to do this other experience." And I was, of course, shaking in my shoes, thinking this is not going to go well. And there were a handful of angry parents, but there were also parents who listened to our teachers talk about why we couldn't continue that tradition and they were fine with it. Of course, some difficult conversations with disappointed parents who wanted to experience this with their kids, but we did the right thing. It was what kids needed and I think parents can support decisions when they're made for the right reasons. This one clearly was. And while there was disappointment, it didn't turn out to be that big of a deal. The Halloween parade was a much bigger deal that year.
This is, I've said this before to the candidates, it is my favorite question, which is, if you got to dream big, what would secondary education look like? And what are the major obstacles you see to achieving this?
That is a big question. It would be a world where students focus more about learning than A's, where they were not concerned about their grades to the point where that's what dominated their thinking. Getting into the right school, I've experienced this with my own daughter, very strong student, and it was her dream to get into the University of Michigan. And despite her near-four-point grade point average and, I don't know, eight AP classes and 1,400 SAT score, she did not get in and she was devastated. Now she's a junior at Miami University in Ohio and she wonders why she ever felt that way. But she went through a really, really horrible period of her senior year for no reason. So I would like to see high school or secondary education be more about helping our young adults become the people that they need to be and less about intense competition and getting into the right school. I'm not sure that I could articulate all the obstacles to that. There are a whole bunch. So I guess I was, maybe I did a better job at telling you what I'd love to see. I'm not sure how to make that happen, but I think the main takeaway from this is, we may not be able to create our ideal vision, but we have to help our high school students understand that it is not the end-all, the-all, that they get into what they think is the right school and that they sacrifice their well-being for high school. Like, and I remember night after night of my daughter sitting there in her little, at her desk at 1:00 in the morning and she would say, "I have no choice, I have to do this." And I would say, "No, you don't." And she did and it didn't go the way she wanted it to. And I think that's the experience of a whole bunch of high school kids. And that's not the high school experience I would want for our students. Learning is important. Rigor is important. Intensity, I said in my opening statement, I'm most comfortable in very rigorous, intense environments, but I think we have to guard against unnecessary pressure that kids don't need. I'm pretty confident that there is plenty of intensity in this community. We need to find ways to help kids learn how to manage that, I think. So I don't think I did a good job of answering your question, but I did say what matters to me.
How do you ensure that people know and understand that you're a parent?
I listen a whole lot more than I talk. I, there are a whole lot of things that I'm not that great at. I think I'm a roomy listener. When I sit down with people, I, it is important to me that I understand them. I can't be effective as a leader if I don't listen well. So my strategy is always to listen more than I talk. I guess this interview is an exception to that. When I meet with people, when I, when I meet with our leadership team in Mason and I plan an objective for a meeting, I don't want to be the dominant voice in the room. Sometimes I have to be, but that's not my preference. Same with teachers. We're beginning the bargaining process in our district and, you know, I'm still going to renew in Mason and I'm still building relationships. It's all about listening and really empathizing with the position that others are in. I think that is a critical leadership skill.
Thank you. What would you say are the key elements to establish and then also maintain a good working relationship between yourself and the staff and us?
I think that it's really important, one, that we need to know each other. You know, I have a great board in Mason and I work hard and they work hard for us to communicate effectively, both formally as well as informally. I mean, sometimes it's just, you know, a conversation that has nothing to do with our work. Sometimes it's just, hey, we need to, we need to have a relationship where we know each other well. So that's first. Then, clear expectations. So I need to know what matters to the Board of Education and what you want to see. When I say you, that's a collective you, the seven of you, not any one individual. But it's really important that there's clarity. Then there has to be really strong communication. You know, I think you should expect regular communication from the superintendent, but also, you know, not so regular communication. Sometimes it's just, hey, I know it's 2:00 in the afternoon and you're at your day job, but I have to talk to you. So, you know, I pick up the phone and I call and I understand that maybe someone can't take a phone call at that time, but I have your message and we communicate as quickly as we can. I think we have to grow together. I think there are a lot of resources to help boards work effectively with superintendents. So I think we've got to take advantage of opportunities to grow together as a team because we have critical work to do together. And you need to have confidence that the superintendent understands what you're looking for, what you want, and that the superintendent's going to communicate regularly, consistently, and effectively with you. That's how I think you build trust and that's how we can be most effective for the community.
All right. You made it through the growing portion of the evening. Not bad. This is the part where, do you have any questions for any of us?
I do and I, I'm not directing this question to any individual. I'd be more than happy for any of you to answer. So I shared with you my sense of the challenges facing the district in the near future. I'm interested in your perspective. What do you feel are the greatest challenges facing Forest Hills Public Schools in the near future?
I think we'll all have different answers to this because there are always challenges in every district. I would say one of our biggest challenges is the communications and relationship with the community and establishing trust. COVID was a really difficult time. It tore a lot of communities apart. Ours is no different. And it's still working its way back. I think more effective communication on a regular basis, open transparency, will help get us there, but it's something that we are still working on.
That's usually what I say, but we also have to all acknowledge, I'm so sorry, the challenges are big enough. We recognize the declining enrollment. We recognize the three high schools that all do amazing things and we have challenges to make sure those opportunities are available to all our kids, which is logistically impossible. So I can't remember the other one you said, but we, what we're hearing from you is what we've already acknowledged and appreciate and you recognize that, so.
I actually thought, Mary, that you bring up that we have a very young board. That's what I was pointing to you. We do have a very young board. Our most experienced member will be leaving soon. And that's also a challenge particular to us as a board and superintendent.
I would say stacking shortages, I mean, that's all over, but definitely here as well and retaining talented, amazing staff.
I would say the same align with, like you and Kristin. I think that's my biggest, my biggest thing is to build the trust back with the community and that we do our jobs effectively and that we're communicating that very well and working together as a team, which we do, you know, already. But to enhance that, I would add to it, transportation's been a little quirky in the past and so I think finding ways to really reach out to people who want to be drivers and love the kids and take pride in their job and bringing our kids to and from school and finding ways to retain and to incentivize, you know, that position for that so parents are not panicking with phone calls and trying to arrange for transportation. I think that's, that's been kind of, you know, a little bit on our radar as well, too.
I did observe as I was, I spent the day here maybe a week and a half ago and was impressed with how large this district is geographically. I can imagine transportation is a challenge. And I also don't think people recognize how difficult the job of a bus driver is. I mean, actually, I have a ride-along with an elementary run next week. You think about the challenge of transporting 60, 70 students with your back turned and the challenge of safely driving and managing behavior and making sure kids get off to the best possible start and end to their day. What an amazing challenge that is and it's a challenge everywhere to find people who love that job.
Got bus drivers behind you smiling to see that working.
Okay, can I move on? So what are the most important characteristics that your next superintendent must have? What are the, what are the must-haves that you want?
I was immediately like throwing my hand out. Vision, vision and of course, that's going to drive strategic planning as the whole , like, community's vision, but that I think is very, very important.
I would say, okay, a creative problem solver that has some fresh ideas. I think that most days this district functions very well and things have worked for a long time, but we have some new issues and I think that they need some creative approaches, just different, that maybe people have seen done well other places. So I think that would be one, too.
I would say a vision for a belonging and inclusive culture with both staff and students and that everybody belongs and feels like they have a place here.
I'll do my best to do some tweeting next week. Tweeting anymore? For inclusion, we can, Mason, you can see.
And I would, I would just tip in on what we identified as an opportunity, which is to build a new structure of communication. And someone who's an excellent communicator, an open communicator, a welcomed boss, a welcome leader of the district, that people feel good and comfortable that they've been hurt and that, that, that that filters down throughout all of our systems.
I would say that I would like to see more new, fresh ideas to take us into the future. Forest Hills is very known also for educating our students and we have a great team that leads the way for them. And I would like to see more opportunities arise from that, but also finding ways that why are we losing students? Is there something within our programs that needs to be tweaked or omitted or enhanced that would encourage people to really put us back on the map of wanting to come and be willing to move into the neighborhoods and be a part of the evidence community or training. I don't know, they're, they're in a long time. And to see why I first moved here was because of Orchard View Elementary and the team that was there and how they, everything was like family. And I know COVID did not do us any favors. I think it did a lot of damage in our homes, our communities and everything else. It was a very divisive tool and I sort of, I think, for the people who started, we can take that, reach that one arm out and pull us back together as a family, as a team and find ways to really educate our kids. I also want to add that I, I too struggled with shaking news that I didn't go to college and it took me a long time because that pressure was put on so much. And I, and I even went to graduation parties, you run into, "Hey, what are you going to do after this? Everybody bombards you with those questions. So how can we remove that and allow kids to have freedom to dream big, to dream what they want to be?" I mean, I'm a small business owner and I didn't go to I mean, I'm a small business owner, and I didn't go to college for it, and I run a very successful company in the hospitality industry. So there's other avenues and other ways to do it, and I would love to see our kids have that same opportunity and remove kind of that anxiety and pressure that usually gets put on them.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I think that's fantastic. Can I go to my closing statement?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to read this. I hope that's okay with you. I just want to be sure I hit all these points. So, "Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. I feel that I'm an excellent fit for this position. My diverse experiences as a high school teacher, middle school assistant principal, elementary principal, assistant superintendent and superintendent have prepared me well for the challenges of serving as superintendent for Forest Hills Public Schools. I had a great job in Mason. I have not been searching for a new position, but this position is unique. The high expectations of the community, tradition of stable leadership, and outstanding student success have made this a very appealing position for me. I very much like to serve this community, and I look forward to meeting with you again this evening. Thank you for that opportunity."
Alright, thank you. We appreciate you coming in, taking time out of your busy schedule. I know it can be difficult to fit all these things in, and so, you know, it's a pleasure.
Thank you.
We're going to take a brief, uh, break.
In most of the class session, I can't stop.
Well, I guess I don't know. The district's a good nation. Well, I'll tell you what, this, the principle.
It's not nice.
It's all pretty healthy, actually.
Yep.
Y'all, let me give them some help.
Okay, give her a bath.
You out of here?
I am.
Okay. Robert, you take it off anywhere for, I know you don't have a spring.
Of course, she has the hand. So, she still. Which, uh, sunrise? So, that's almost from nine until six, that's where she was. So, now with this, but she's still, that's even if she's a student. She still has all these doctor appointments. Everything else, she doesn't have.
Well, we start now with, at least exciting enough. Yeah. What time? It's like an hour and a half, a couple hours. But, I guess. They gave her some medications and then she just came out. Just sort of mobbing. Moss. She couldn't make anything she could help. Couldn't even press a button on the left. So, she had to do all those things. And even though she kept her foot, so she got it. She dropped it. She thought that you know how to sign her name.
Prior to that, she was.
Yeah. She could still punch you, you know, she couldn't, uh, just. She's this nice on a wife or a sister, you wouldn't believe what she was just on three or four. Now, being like the buyer. Being the people walking around with the, um, party. No, no, she has her own place. Uh, mostly with. Now, it's, well, it'd be, uh, more hopeless than. She has the, had all her medicine. The third thing. And, of course. Coaching for Central. Of course, basketball. So, even if we're hoping, our plan actually might kill their risk. And you?
Yeah, so my, um, my friend here in Boston. My kids want the northern. But I'm only five minutes from Central. Oh, okay. Well, that's good. Every other year, so. Always trying to show. Great, Kathy. So, you're a student's education, so. Free logic, right? But there's twenty-six of us. Great big house, but it's got the families close. Over the years, and so, this is the on year for Supreme Break program. Now, we're gonna go down. A lot of change. So, my sister's family. Or still, either go or head gone.
That's nice, too, because if I don't have that option.
Spend some time on your, uh, here on our beach. Animal city.
Yeah. Yeah, you're not too far from present. In that area.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Yeah, we could have one year, but it's fun. It is just a week back. And got a big house. That's what my, my, uh, mother's son liked. And that is fun. But which fun could you, you've got all your family close by, so you at least could visit now and then. Get to see them, because I have a sister in Florida, a brother in Maryland. My other brother lives over halfway. So, I do get to see them much more frequent, because it's just a two-hour drive. But I haven't seen my sister in a while for two years, because we were gonna do something over Christmas. New Year's in Florida. That was part of our plan. Go to the university. And see what she's doing.
Seasonal cottages, not much, but. Rally point for the summer?
I would think so. I would be there a lot.
As much as humanly possible. Two-hour drive? Fishing, auto aid, BM, you gotta do all kinds of things. Makes you a real tight-knit family. You see the world shut down.
Yeah, we're going up. Well, that's great. I always envy them. I envy Michigan's family. It's amazing. I mean, our family actually started growing up in Ohio. And my father was the first one to go away. Little school. She had to use the little. That's why I say.
Did you call Louisville?
Yeah.
So, on my side, my sister.
Oh, so cute. Thank you.
She didn't wipe them out, too. I said, no, it's fine. Louisville is as far north as I want to go.
I don't tell that.
Fifty-five and sixty, I mean, it's up. I mean, this is.
I don't know when the last thing I've done, but along the river, it's been all weird. Great restaurants.
Used to go to the dollhouse all the time for dinner, then we jump on the Bell River. In fact, that's where we had our graduation, the Bell River. We had Booker T. and M.T. Playa and the Bell River went down, up and down the river with us. And, uh, close to University of Louisville. That's where I wanted to go, but my dad said, no. I'm not coming home that weekend. Just forget that.
Sent you away, huh?
Well, so, didn't do that, but, you're right. I mean, there is a lot to do, and there's a lot of places to go. Go in the shade, go burn the forest. Indianapolis with Five Hundred's only two hours away. And, of course, I went to Derby like fifteen years ago.
Went to Louisville, went to, um, that place. Church of Down.
Church of Down.
Took the kids there. They've never been there since I was in the state. I was there for the few trips, but I don't. I always liked to see the old churches. It's great. Off the city.
It's really, it's great. And it's, yeah, there's a lot to do in the area. So, because I'm in the city. An hour and a half away, you can be camping. Great horse. I like the travel here in there. My church of Raywoods in Indiana. I always loved going down to Kentucky. I thought that, I think that's an anchor of heart, because, uh, that's not far out of here.
You hike, you see the new.
Yeah. It wasn't too far from the river.
I used to only just cut through there, and now you can hike it all. The waterfalls. It's close.
Hoping we can start doing that sometime soon.
How's your mom feeling?
Yeah, it's, so, she is doing better, but knowing my wife, the idea of her leaving anytime soon. Because we even talked about it. She said, what's time to start planning this? I said, okay, do a cruise. No, not a cruise, just in case. I said, oh, there's something you need to go with tomorrow. Yeah. She's the only child. In fact, she's the only child on her dad's side, period. From all his brothers and sisters. She's the only child they have. I know. I know.
Yep.
I brought my little, I brought my little cushion today. Soda wrapper.
That's an old antique, old Ford stills, two thousand eleven.
I took my gardening, this is what we use for gardening.
So, no knee pads, huh? This, this the garden pad?
No, I kneel on this.
Oh, okay.
Do you have any feelings about Indian fire?
I think the next day. Yeah, I, I mean. This is a difficult, it's a difficult time. It's a difficult budget cycle. So, it's gonna, it's gonna be tricky. Right now, in my mind, I'm wondering, I'm thinking that we'll. But I don't know.
Yeah, I, there's two that I look at. There's one I just hope doesn't get unwist. Two of my thought, we're okay, they're comparable.
You know, being in the profession, you know people that know people. I think the two that I think it will be, um, very, people are very kind. You know, said very kind things. I think it'll.
Yeah. But, there's one I just hope, I was really had high hopes of that one. I just, after it was over, I thought, oh, man. This is not what I was thinking.
Once we're done, we'll see if it's the same person.
Okay.
Because it's all about a fit. I think everyone that came up here, uh, is knowledgeable. I think that they're in it for the right reasons. And it's just, you know, whether that their experiences translate well here. And I think it, you know, knowing the community and hope they'll be able to.
Just, but, you know, that's one thing nice about this community. It doesn't take long to learn. To feel comfortable in school, because we did, when we moved here two thousand two. It wasn't long before we felt like we, you know, we're right into it. Good super, if he gets really involved, like he's going to, he's going to. All of a sudden, he'll, he'll pick up the vibe pretty quick. You know, whether I'm in East, because I spend most of my time in Central because of my coaching. And I also run the scoreboard for, you know, the basketball. I have, was involved with Forest Hills because of my kids. A little bit with Eastern, only as a substitute teacher. But, being in them, I just realized that it doesn't take long in this, in this district to feel comfortable.
One of the things, uh, people appreciate when you help out, too. You know, they see you, you become recognized, you know, lots of times. Very appreciated, especially when they see you like, oh, my gosh, you're doing something for my kid. You know, this district is very gracious with.
Well, you're right, because it's, I didn't think, when I started doing substitute teaching, I thought I liked it. But it's beside the cake, that I have schools that are gonna call me up. Instead of me going through, uh, Red Rover. The Denny's staff. They'll call me and say, Robert, have you come in?
Sure.
So, and like, Mr. Peltz here? I mean, I love it when I come, because I really interact with the kids. I just don't like a lot of subs, just you do this, do this. I tried to make it so, on a short time with them, that they feel comfortable with me, that they would want me to come back. What's that? Oh, yeah. Yeah. You make me feel, my first, uh, two times there, I first started, first thing I did was phys ed. That was a kick. The next one, I went to third grade. And when I went there a second time, he was very, he manned his office, so, I really appreciate you coming here. Having a need for teachers, right? So, I felt very good, and every time I go there, he always comes out and talks to me. Comes down to class, how you doing? Hey, class, how we doing?
Of course, you know, Jeff and John and Sheryl.
Oh, very much so, yep.
Those two crack me up.
Yeah. Yeah, no, no, it's like Mutt and Jeff.
Yep.
So, when I, it's fun, because I've substituted there a couple times. They'll be walking down the hall there, there, I'm standing there, and they go, I thought we only had you at night. Because of basketball. Well, you got me now. So, great. So, they, when they find I'm subbing, and even though if I don't see them, they'll come down and, and, uh. Yeah. It's always, because I, I don't do math. And I don't do, uh, English. All the others, and language, of course. But the other stuff, history. Geography, science, you know, I'm happy with any of them.
It becomes more, once you sort of break through, it becomes more fun when you start to get to know the kids. You start recognizing another person, then it becomes fun.
It does.
But it can be a challenge until you get to know those kids. They can.
Oh, I know. But, going, since I've been to Pine Ridge, I've done Pine Ridge at least five times. It's fun when I go down the hall, like during lunch. Or racing. They call me Coach Chris, or Coach Robert. Coach Robert, we could have you today? I said, what do you mean? You already have your teacher. I'm gonna be across the hall. No, it is fun. And the other teachers notice that when I'm there. No, it is fun, and the other teachers notice that when I'm there.
No, it's probably the thing I miss most about being in elementary, is just the fun that you can have with your kids.
I do. Because Meadowbrook called me up last Monday. They were desperate to get a PE teacher. Because they couldn't fill it. I didn't notice it, and so they called me up. And I don't mind PE, but the kindergarteners destroy me. I, you know, all the other ones, but it's fun, because interacting with all those different grades, because you've got all the grades you need. So, when you go to lunch, and you have all these different grades show up for lunch, it's like, "Hey, Coach Robert, Coach Robert, will you sit with us?" "Oh, no, he's gonna sit with us, he's teaching us today." But it's a fun.
Yep, 100%.
But as I tell you, the kindergarteners was, and PE, the emotions with kindergarteners are unbelievable. It's okay, we're gonna do snakes in the grass, or Red Rover, something like that. "I don't wanna do that, I don't want to do that." I said, "Come on, do it a little bit." "Yeah, I don't wanna do it." So, they sit in the corner and cry. So, the meeting, the kids cry because they don't want to do this, and you're trying to get the other ones to do it. I made a mistake and I left the game closet open that had all the balls and all the stuff. So, I'm working with some of these kids, meantime, I didn't realize the other five that I had, they were, they wanted to play some basketball. Okay, I said, "Okay, here's the ball, go ahead, let me get these other kids to start." It wasn't five minutes. I turned around, 100 jump ropes are up all over the floor. And you know, they're all different lengths, and he had them all separated in lengths and colors. And they were knotted up, because the kids were like, "I want a jump rope." I said, "Why did you have to pull them all out?"
100%.
So, I had to deal with that. So, it took me 45 minutes to untaggle them and separate them and hang them back up and, ugh.
We'll have to get, we'll have to get you in a classroom sometime.
Please do. I love it. They're so cute.
Film when they use glitter.
Oh, because it's everywhere.
I actually, I begged our kindergarten staff, "Please do not use glitter anymore in the building, because you can't clean it up." Are you, are you a glitter fan? Glitter, kindergarten staff, you don't care?
No, we're just talking about substitute teaching and stuff.
And I was talking about glitter. Like, if you ever go in with a kindergarten, like, it's like, you will not make it out of this kindergarten room without it all over you.
March is reading month.
Which is not glitter month. I'm okay with the reading.
Oh, it's, I know, but it's not only glitter.
Wherever I get invited, I go.
Well, you subbed for me for reading when I was there. I know, I thought, I can handle this.
Well, I knew that you could, but I just figured it's, the students didn't know you, and you were going into the other room.
Oh, they know me.
I thought maybe you wanted a couple of minutes, so.
I have my own personal collection of guaranteed read aloud, principal read aloud, and glitter. What I, what's hard now, our kids are so well read. What? Oh, no, I've, I've got, I can't, I can't share my titles.
I've gotta get a couple of books. I'm reading tomorrow night at seven, Bedtime Story Uncle. So, if you've got a good title.
Oh, I've got many, many.
Because I'm trying to think, because I've read so many, that I'm trying to find something that I haven't done.
I need weather books.
Weather books?
They need weather books. I've got a whole list of.
They're very unpredictable.
On your Zoom call, how many kids are you getting?
That was good. I have to give you a few of those.
I don't know. I did it for the first turn in the fall, and I just had a couple of spurts. You know, I wanted to say I probably had about 100 in the fall, but I think this one's gonna be really big, just because now the word's gonna come out. So, I think it'll be fun.
You do it once a month?
Nope, I just did it in the fall, and you know, I'm like, let's try it. But the feedback was really good, and the students were all pumped and coming in, "Hey, I saw you," and this and that, so I was like, let's do it again.
You have a great school. I feel very comfortable. The teachers are all nice. Of course, a lot of the kids, because I've done there before, they see me in the hallway.
They know you now.
Yeah, I know. Are you teaching with us?
I'm appreciative, because you pick up, you always like, I always think that something got filled, and I'm working it all out, and I'm like, "You then pick up that slot and, you know, do so long. You're out with the kids at recess sometimes and everything, so I'm just appreciative of that."
Oh, I know, but I have fun with them. And it's, it's appreciated, because they always ask me, "Are you coming back tomorrow?"
Yeah.
So, I figured if I got them that far in one day.
That was wonderful, you're right, for a while, because there was a little bit where I didn't see.
I didn't see anything opened up with you, and then when it opened up, I was already maybe at Old Orchard View.
Very sure.
They caught me. So, I mean, you can always.
Well, there's been a couple of times that I was like, oh yes, you picked up, and it was like half an hour or 45 minutes before. Seemingly is what it seemed like on my end.
Yeah, well, yeah, this last one was, because I didn't see it the night before. I got up the next morning, I told my wife, I said.
You know what I think it is? I mean, we've been trying to keep all of our subs too. You know, and so it's like, we love having you guys there. We have so many good subs. And I think that they're liking it too, so I think people are like, oh, this is, trying to get this spot. You know, like immediately, because like, I've had fewer openings this year than the last two years. And I think like, you kinda, you know, you kinda, you wanna keep your people, you kinda recruit them. Maybe your search is, because this year I had less, at six, six thirty in the morning, moving people around.
Well, see, in the case of Meadowbrook, the last two times they did call me, I remember, we have an opening, would you take it? Here's what we have. I said, "As long as it isn't in, in language." Because, you know, I don't know, I don't know Chinese. Although Meadowbrook doesn't call me on Chinese, or Chinese immersion, or Spanish. But else, everything else, they will. And uh, Orchardville, I'm just getting with them, but yeah. And I used to have both girls and boys, but they haven't, not sure. Because I do B-girls. But I do B, uh, seventh grade B-girls, and we did, well, we have.
Well, two guys weren't there last Friday. Like, Terry and the basketball, it's March Madness. So, we did, Lightyear in the gym with the basketball team, so staff.
Oh, really?
And students were all watching, of course. You know, and so it was connected.
Well, yeah, I could very well, because I run the fall. Because I did the girls' team.
Yeah.
So, I ran the Central High School to the high school. So, I did freshman JV, varsity girls and boys on the clock. So, I got to know the coaches, and that was fun, because. Most of them, more than you guys.
Oh, okay, yeah. I told the high school students from there, because some of them were wearing sandals, and they were playing their first game in playoffs that night, last Friday. And I'm like, guys, because I mean, they were playing, don't roll a nickel or something here for, you know, a couple hours.
Because the poor man needs, needs to come up from the air.
And he said I went there to.
Well, a couple of things transpired. He called my mom.
Positive or kind of a.
Wait and see that, I don't think.
I look at the first one, it's kind of superficial. You know, you've got questions that are kind of on the outside, and it's like, who do you want to know more about? Is who I, how I look at it.
Yeah, because you didn't get to see the two yesterday.
The thing is, if they were knocking out of the park and people fluffing after a second, they couldn't be here. But if they were, I am interested in hearing a little bit.
The blood's in the family, is what you're saying.
Yes, it does. No one can keep a secret.
I really do. The blood, I was really.
But then, of course, naturally, Alec was like, well.
Did you open your Christmas gift early to?
Yeah. She was my little friend.
I'm curious to see what they say. Because I hear so many different perspectives, you know, from people.
Are you gonna say that to you?
I hear one thing, and I hear something opposite, you know, and I'm, so I'm just, I'm curious to see what they, take it all into.
But I hope they do it based on what they want, it's the best, and that what's okay. See what they might be the most exclusive. And uh, so that's why I'm worried about one maybe. I think she should. But I thought it was actually the fifth or sixth of all five. You know, I couldn't actually, it's her. Somebody that has deep plan and a few other things there.
My niece and nephew, Dr. Kinsley's Hailewaha School. Oh, really? So, we covered a few things. It's like, you know, we are just seeing, and he took the time to call me, and was just saying how much he respects me. And I'm like, I have a time to get into school, you know, and uh, so just when you hear things, like, you know, here tonight, to me, it gives it a. Just gives it a little jump, because I feel like at any point in the day, we gotta know themselves.
Well, it's, he'd be a veteran from the side, I, you know, I'm saying.
Wow, I'm good. I actually had a bag of apples. Thank you.
Jesus.
Their person is just like to have something, either you know someone, or somebody from the side, that is a candidate, who can speak to what they can do with their remedies. More than music, something is, you know, in them from the side. Like, the different, how do you handle it? You know, like when it's a regular conversation, so I just, you better resolve this.
Did you know him before he was up here?
Only through them. Like, I've never talked to him.
So, this is the first time you actually saw him?
Yeah, but I really wanted to be here because of what my nephew said. Like I said, for him to take the time to call, you know, being a senior in high school, and speak to his elementary years, with him being a principal, I don't know, meant something.
No, it does.
Yeah, I was, it's like, call on him, he's like, "You know who I'm talking to about the principal?" You know, and I was like, yeah. Let's do it. I talked a little weekend, so I like it. Yes, yes.
So, the question is, are they gonna choose two or three? I don't think they would do any more than, than three. I don't think it would be four. I like seeing how they ponder on it. They're pondering, you can tell.
Tough, isn't it? Kind of tough, isn't it? So, anytime, because there's just too many people in this room. Before I walk into the building, I just do a little looksy, and then I can say hello by name. I used to do, so at one point in time, that forest had over 700 kids. I used to stand by the lunch lady, and I would, a kid would check in, and scan in, and call the kid.
You would have known anyway about what I said.
And they'd scan in, and their name would show up on the monitor. Like the bath cats you put. Oh, they absolutely thought, like, he knows my name. Absolutely.
Everybody knows your name.
No, it's just honoring my trip. When I was a principal, we had over 700 kids in that forest at one time. And on day one, I'd tell the kids, I know all their names. They would scan in, you know, for their lunch, get their lunch, and their name would pop up on the monitor. And I'd be like, Robert, it's so good to see you. You guys know my name. Absolutely.
Isn't that cheating?
Little bit, but that's how I memorized their names too, though, because about a week of doing that, and I got them all. I don't think so.
No, there's a few schools open in Forest Hills. What do you do? You know, I don't know, I know music, but to have a whole day of teaching music, I don't know, as a sub, what do you do? You say, "Okay, sing to me."
Not it, not this guy.
Okay, that's all I could do. Okay, everybody, just sing to me, sing to me.
My gift to you is not singing to you.
No, no, they'll, they'll sing to me.
No, I know, I'm just saying, if I were to go in, it would be.
Because I, when I was, I almost took, you know, you know, Roki?
Jeff, yeah, yeah.
There was an opening there, and I was kidding with my wife, and I said, "You know, I think I'm gonna take, take that, that position." She said, "What? That's the band." I said, "Yeah, but I've always wondered what they're like, if I stand up there and go like this and see what they do." I said, "Well, that's all they do, you know, like, watching it." I said, "No, why can't I do the same thing?" So, all of a sudden, I go like this, and they go, da, 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 da. And I go over here, da, 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 da. So, I just like, if I just waved my hand, I might create music. Needs to say I didn't do it. I got a feeling they would all just stare at me like, yeah.
What song should we play?
No, just follow my hands, people. Do it, do what I do.
I, I went through like, four articles on AI, I mean, some are already, they'll leave off the task force. Whole other challenge. The part that I don't understand about it still, and I'm hoping that someone can fill me with my experience, is the students, what data can be stolen? I didn't see it.
Well, there's directory information that is a law.
But it's, when a student does a search, what we're hearing, or if a staff member does a search, that becomes public knowledge. I just, I don't understand the connection there. So, when I went to, I was at a conference for MASAS, and Sean, Sean Bishop? I said, "Explain that to me. I don't get that." So, we're gonna work with MASASP and try to figure out, we're gonna work on some. So, we're gonna work with MAS S P and try to figure out, we're gonna work on some guidance, um, because it can be a tale of two cities. One classroom bans it, the other's using it, and you're not gonna get equitable outcomes.
Right.
So, we're gonna.
It's gonna be tricky.
Well. And the, the, well, the way it changes.
Yes.
By the time you write the policies out there.
That's, that's gonna be a catch to it, so. For you guys with the, or truly true.
And their type, my guess is that they're, first type, they're kind of, they're shaped. They have now, so they'll probably make some recommendations. Unlawable, hard policy, or.
Be dealing with standard, standard here. And administrative guidelines, people gotta, records, policy.
One of the articles I was reading, it talked about, uh, almost, uh, as part of your authorization, your permission, your permission to use.
Right.
So, they said, look to, there's a couple of, or, a couple of school districts in North Carolina that have some advance, they've been down the road a little bit here. I think Northville's doing some really unique, uh, they've got a head start here in Michigan, they've got some interesting policies. University of Michigan has got some good stuff. But, you know, still teachers are like banned. Kindergarten students will know, you see, your fifty-nine-year-old kindergarten teacher. But, you think about those kindergarten kids, they will know life, they will not know life without it.
Right, exactly.
Better to teach them how to use it.
Fifty-nine-year-old kindergarten teacher is gonna, she knows life without it.
Here's what else can teach staff how to, uh, resour, 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 resur, resur, teacher, how AI can help write. If not, it's a draft, it falls, and then they're, oh, this is the best thing ever. I think it's our students. Well, no, that's cheating. Well, what, what did you just do?
That's, that's what we've taught kids for how many years.
It's a crazy world.
Okay, if I can have everybody's attention just for a second, um, I, don't read me, get my coaching voice out, right? Once upon a time. Um, first of all, I appreciate your time and patience as, as the board goes through this, but secondly, I have an ask of you. And that is, once the Board of Education makes a decision on who they are going to bring back for the final interviews, if you would please give me a couple minutes, is all I'm gonna ask for, because I'm gonna call all five candidates. They know it's going to be a very, very short conversation, whether it's G A or N A, and then I'll have follow-up conversations. I just don't like them having to find out, or looking on Facebook, or X, or whatever it's called today, um, to find out that way. They've heard from me all the way through this process, so I think that's the approach we'd like to take. So, if you can help me out with that, I would, I would appreciate it. So, the Board of Education, you guys have had the opportunity to look at the applications, resumes, um, we developed a profile using input from the community, um, input from the Board of Education members, uh, we used the survey focus groups, we developed that. So, the Board of Education has kind of a, a framework of what they're looking for in their new superintendent. It is not an exact science, and nobody is perfect, please understand that. These candidates have been vetted, all right, very, um, thoroughly, and I can tell you from my perspective, there are no red flags that ought to prohibit anybody from getting the job in this district. They've interviewed five candidates that have all done the job, maybe in a different district, but they've all been superintendents. That doesn't mean they're the right fit for Forest Hills, though, and that's what this board has to decide as, as they go through this. But we've talked about their body of work that they brought to the table, we've seen the interview, we've seen the paperwork. For your part, you have mainly seen the interview, and I wanna caution everybody that that's only part of this process. If, if it was all based on the interview, I'm not sure you would be blessed with the appropriate candidate, because some people interview better than others. We need to understand their body of work and what they bring to the table in preparation for this job. So, the Board of Education and, and what we've done in the past, and everything has to be done in an open session now. They cannot go back into closed session. The only time they were able to do that was when they reviewed applications, uh, resumes, and letter of interest, because all candidates asked for confidentiality, and that mirrors the Open Meetings Act. So, that we can go into closed session for that. Everything else is an open session. They have not had the opportunity to deliberate and talk about these candidates. Now, the process we used for them to determine who they were going to interview is going to be the same process we use now to select who goes to the finals. That's where the Board President will call on one trustee at a time, and they will express who they are interested in bringing back for a final interview. The reason we do it that way, and I will chart each one of their responses and who they choose. The reason we do it that way is because we don't want negativity out there. We're not here to tear somebody down. Well, I didn't like candidate A or candidate B for this reason. Let's talk about why we wanna bring somebody back, so we can keep it in a positive realm. Now, as we chart this, and it did as we picked people to interview, it led us to an obvious decision. That may not be the case right now, okay? And so, if, picking on Mary Vaughn for a second, if she's the first one to speak, and she names two candidates to bring back, another board member may name three, another one, board member may only name one. There's no set number of how many people we're going to bring back. That's a Board of Education decision. But that's not their vote at that point. That's their input, okay? So, as Mary hears from the other six, she may be sold on a third candidate. That's okay, all right? It's an open process until we get that motion, and then it's approved, and that's who we'll invite back. I'm confident all five of them would like to return for a second interview. I'm confident because I've asked them a question, all right? So, I expect they're gonna honor their word on that. So, that's the process we'll use. I just wanted everybody to understand that, and I'll turn it back to the Board Presidents.
Thank you very much. And before we start, I want to say thank you again to everybody here on the board. This is a lot of work, it's a lot of hours. Thanks to Val as well, Elizabeth, everybody, Dave. It's, um, it's a collective collaborative effort, um, and I appreciate the amount of time and thoughtfulness that everybody has brought to this so far. Um, as Dave said, we have not talked about this at all, so these are, you know, everybody's sort of feeling a little nervous inside going, oh, who's, you know, what am I gonna say? What, who's gonna say what? So, it's, it's gonna kind of unfold, and it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. And since I also know that nobody likes to go first, I will offer to go first. So, I will just get my thoughts out there, and lead the way, and then everybody else can join in. Um, so, in no particular order, the first person I would like to invite back is Benjamin Kirby. Um, I thought that he, he came to us with a reputation for being a proactive communicator, and I think that that came through in his interview with us. He talked about how he works with all kinds of different various groups, and communication was key. Uh, he didn't mention this, but he also has a podcast that he hosts, and it was kind of interesting to go back and look at some of the podcasts that he's done in different areas of the community. Um, so, he does what he came to, to get out there. I liked that when he was talking about budget limitations, that he emphasized looking at the long term, and what the long-term needs of the district were, and not just what's the easiest to cut in the short term. He seemed really very supportive of staff, and creating capabilities and capacities for building and developing staff, um, which is important. He had clearly done his homework, uh, and, and learning what he could about the district. And I liked the fact that he didn't jump in with regardless strategic, strategic plan, saying that he has the answer on the side to a strategic plan. I mean, it's like, a little more reflective, like, I need to know more about the district, I need to get a first tier, I need to talk to people, uh, I need to understand what all the different initiatives, uh, priorities are. So, I think that, along with the fact that he's worked in so many different capacities for teacher, all the way up to superintendent, he's worked in large districts as well, ones that are similar to ours, um, you know, South Lion with eighty-five hundred students, that's, you know, pretty similar to ours. He's done H R, publications, transportation, athletics, he's done all of these different roles. So, I think that, uh, I think that he was, he, for those reasons, he's the first one that I would like to invite back. The second that I would like to invite back is Jennifer Fee. I thought it was interesting and potentially great that she had a marketing and advertising background. Um, I think that sort of that P R, uh, flavor could be very helpful for our district, especially when looking at communications. I thought her answers were extremely thorough. Uh, there wasn't a single question that we asked where I felt like I came away and still had a question that I wanted to follow up with her on. Like, she, you know, gave a broad answer, and then gave specific details of things that she had done. She came across as very deliberate and intentional in everything that she did, I think even her answers to our questions were very deliberate and intentional. I think being from, having been come up through East Grand Rapids, that she has a bit of an advantage for understanding Forest Hills. You know, it's proximity, fairly similar in so many different respects, I think that that would help get her on her feet right away. I thought she had a really nice answer to the challenge of leading a district with three high schools, that, looking at areas where it makes sense to have things that are standardized on a curriculum, things like that across, but also to have areas where they're allowed to be unique. And it's a, it's a challenging thing to do, but I thought she articulated her understanding of that very well. She'd had great experience implementing new programs, especially the I B, I thought she did a good job explaining that, and I really liked what she called her drip approach, um, bringing students, staff, parents in, doing it very slowly, very deliberately, taking the time needed to bring things together. So, yeah, so with all of those things being said, um, I think that she would be a nice fit, uh, along with the fact that, you know, she did specifically mention that our district's vision and mission align with her own. And I think that's something important that, you know, she specifically said, I looked at this, and this resonates with me, and that's why I'm interested. So, those are the two that I would go for. Does anybody wanna jump in and go second?
Well, I guess I will go second, and this is because I have the same two. So, I thought I'd just add a little bit of my thoughts that were different from yours. Not necessarily different. So, um, first, of course, was Benjamin Kirby, and, uh, I found him to be a, a good communicator in his interview. Now that, I mean, all of the candidates, really truly, I wanna say this, I, I was impressed with all five candidates. And, gosh, it was tough to think about, you know, the slight differences, um, but I did really appreciate the way that he communicated with us. I liked the way that he explained his plans for communication. I think that he would be effective in that way. I really appreciated the way that he paid attention to supports for staff. And I don't just mean teachers, administration, but talking about the support that is clearly very important to him. And that would be important to me, and I should think to be important to everyone. We gotta take care of the people who are providing our, our students with what they, what they need. I think, um, uh, I really liked what he had to say about reducing barriers. Yes, more than one candidate talked about that. But that was something that stuck out to me with each candidate who did. Uh, reducing the barriers for learning and really taking into consideration student voice in that process, I think is really important. That stuck out to me. And finally, just in, in research that I had done on my own or talking to people, this particular candidate is quite appealing to community and staff members as well in our district, so the feedback I was getting was very positive there, matching my thoughts as well. All right, and then, yes, the second candidate I'd like to, um, offer for another interview would be Dr. Fee. And, um, this is the only candidate who aced an answer, in my opinion. And I don't really wanna necessarily share which answer and which question that was, but, okay, question nineteen, what does that mean to everyone? But actually, what it was question nineteen, oh, yeah, question nineteen. Okay, fine, I will, I will, you're curious, so I guess I'll test it.
Kristen's favorite question.
It is Kristen's, it's both Kristen's favorite question, actually. So, the dream big question, I think, is really important, because, uh, I don't know, I mean, just, yes, I am speaking from the perspective of somebody who's been a board member and a parent and a teacher for over a couple decades. And leadership, leadership needs that vision. I mean, I made that clear even when it was mentioned before. There has to be that vision. That vision is created, though, through a strategic plan, through what the community wants, what the students want, what everyone involved is. But she had such a clear answer to the dream big one, and it was, it was what I think is the direction that would be right for Secretary Asus to offer, that, um, removing of the barriers, adding opportunities. I just, I loved the answer so much, so, yes, there were great answers from all candidates, but I was surprised that I had one that I actually felt really strongly, just simply about an answer. That enough was for me to wanna ask some more questions and find out, you know, if you've got, if that's a vision there, what do you see, are the ways to bring Forest Hills to that, um, edge there? I mean, we had some candidates who were very, uh, have great, you know, great track record of innovation. And innovation is, is particular interest to me. I mean, I loved how one candidate mentioned, um, teaching AI, absolutely, and, um, bringing in C T E, dual enrollment, middle college, all of these sorts of things. But these are things that we, or I V, for example, these are things that we are not necessarily pursuing, and I'd like to see that our leadership would be open to that sort of thing, if that is what our community finds that it needs and wants. But I think if we ask students, I think, you know, when we come down to who is being served here, I think we're gonna see that's, that's the direction as well. So, I was, um, I found it very appealing. I do think she has the home turf advantage, and I don't wanna undercut the importance of that. Uh, although I will point out that, um, Mr. Kirby, um, his experience in schools that are similar, I am from the east side of the state, I grew up, um, in the area, have family who have attended Lake Oregon schools and South Lion, and familiar with, yeah, there's some overlap, for sure, and that kind of experience is valuable. It's also valuable that, uh, Dr. Fee has done work here in East Grand Rapids. And although our schools' needs, our district's needs are more different than I think some people might think, I do think there's an advantage there. I appreciated especially her references to taking intelligent risks. I felt that the way that she communicated, um, reflected that she probably is an intelligent risk taker, and that was appealing to me. I also appreciated how, when she talked about cuts, she immediately talked about looking to stakeholders to help make that decision, not just cutting it from a, um, a heavy-handed leadership perspective. Also appreciated her, um, references to modeling and celebrating. Celebrating cannot be emphasized enough, and yet it's something that is forgotten. So, when it comes to understanding the culture, not understanding culture, building culture, maintaining a culture of belonging and inclusion, not just for students, building in the schools, but for the staff and everyone involved, stakeholders of the district, I think that's really important. And, yeah, I think I'm just gonna leave it at that, too. It's tempting for sure, but I feel a little bit more strongly about this, too.
I would say, at this moment in time, around the table, you know, we'll have more conversation, I have the most interest in bringing back, um,
um, I have the most interest in bringing back, um, Kurt Benjamin Kirby. Um, I feel, so number one, I want to say that when I read his, when we had the, all the information, um, and they had those essay questions, students or they had shared ideas that maybe didn't necessarily get shared, and they're gonna be, because it was a different format. Um, I felt like when I read his biography and I read his answers and I read his thoughts on education and his history, I felt like there was a real energy that kind of came off the page about him, um, that I felt instantly, this is someone who could bring a lot to the table, has some creative ideas, um, but also just really truly has a heart for educating the kids and building consensus in a community and staff members. Um, I feel that of all of the candidates, their current positions is, um, is the most similar to the school district that we would, would have ourselves. Um, very large high school, um, very similar demographic as Forest Hills. Um, I lightly had to say about his aspiring leaders program that he has implemented in his district, uh, for raising up new school leaders. Um, he very specifically called out, um, his creative approaches to transportation issues. Um, so that was welcomed, um, just kind of what we've been working through. He mentioned student safety is a high priority numerous times, um, which resonates with me. And he also talks about net line to create legacy costs and really constantly evaluating those, uh, in terms of being, having a responsible budget. Um, I thought, I loved his answer to, um, intentionally having high school kids work with middle school and elementary kids to appreciate where they came from and to build a sense of belonging and to create connectivity, uh, throughout the entire district. And, and I think that happens here too, but the fact that he called that out and he clearly had a very, um, intentional program at work, um, I thought was interesting, so I'd love to hear more about that. Um, I thought, and I, I've spoken to other people who live in this up Lion area and incredibly impressed with his quick thinking, his creative thinking during COVID, um, and really took on just such a leadership role in that district during, during that time period. And then I just think he came across as incredibly measured, thoughtful, a delegator, um, doesn't need to be the star of the show, definitely wants to, is the leader, but I think he's very willing to let other people shine where they can shine. Um, kind of has that very pliable power of him, which I think, uh, is a great leadership skill. I loved his answer to question number nineteen as well, talking about, um, student internships, um, reducing that barrier, um, to the state testing. I mean, you asked, it was a dream big if we were not beholden to that state testing, um, and creating more internship opportunities for students, uh, talked about changing start times for schools, um, and just, and, you know, and he experimented with that a little bit in his district too. So not being afraid, kind of, to try some of those things that we talk about a lot in this educational space as potentially being beneficial for students. So I would say that at this point, that's who I would be the most excited about bringing back, uh, to ask some more questions of. Couldn't help but want to point out, you know what, when you mentioned that, I turned to his nineteen, and I did draw a star next to it. So who got stars? Okay?
Sure. Um, I guess, uh, a- a- at the top, what's, what's been on my mind evaluating these in the last three days and the weeks before, with the material that we've had, um, is that we had a pretty good slate of, of, of people, and, and we've, and I saw the comment a few times, you know, short tenures in districts, or, you know, why leaving so soon? And, and I don't think that's the case for anybody who's applied to this. Their applications mentioned it, and I think it speaks to Forest Hills and the people that are here now at the superintendent theme and decades worth of work in Forest Hills, um, that this is ju, that this district is considered, you know, a, a gold star in a career still, um, and, and, and that people are willing, not pursuing anything, but have to pursue this, um, because it's, it's a career topper. Um, so I think we're very fortunate, and, and we had a, a great long list of accolades in everybody that we were able to speak to. Um, so I think that deserves to be said. Um, my framework also in looking at this was what the purpose of this next round is, which is to, to learn more and to ask more individualized questions, more district-specific questions. And again, I, I think we could bring any of these five back and learn more from them and probably be impressed as we got to know them more. But in terms of narrowing, which, which has to be done, I sort of went back to the profile that we created and a lot of the opportunity, um, that we all identified when they asked the question and before, obviously, we sat down here, um, at what we are looking for in priorities, what, what our community and staff and administrators have said that they are looking for. And so on, on top of my mind were, um, communication, good communicator, internal communication, uh, external to the district communicators, relationship builders, uh, people with systems experience, but also willing to understand ours is probably different than any that any of the five of them have worked in previously, and a willingness to come and understand our system, um, and, but have experience to build on that. Uh, and, and the ability to build capacity in our district and to focus on teacher growth, administrator growth, um, and, and place emphasis on that. So with, with that in mind, um, I, I have three people that I wouldn't mind. I have two, uh, that, that are higher.
It's so suspenseful.
This is so suspenseful. Oh, I keep going. You want more of those?
No, stop.
No. Um, I, I echo what you said, um, but before my, my, number one and my, number two in my mind are, uh, Mr. Ben Kirby and Dr. Kinzer, um, who we heard from tonight, with, um, Dr. Fee also being on that list in my mind. If we were beholden to two, which we are not, um, I, I would have the first two, but I would be curious to, to certainly hear more from Dr. Fee as well, really for those reasons that, that were mentioned for all of them. Um, I echo essentially everything that's been said about, about, um, Mr. Kirby and Dr. Fee. Um, Mr. Kirby mentioned many times honor in the past and understanding what Forest Hills means to everyone here and not with any intention to come in and make this the Ben Kirby Show. You know, I didn't obviously get a single sense of that. Um, he made a, a, a very point of being visible and that that's his style, uh, very transparent is his style. I think that fits very well with what we're looking for. He's got a track record, um, in his current locations in the areas of student mental health and increasing resources there and, and, and making that a priority, which I found helpful. I, I loved his, um, related to board communications and, and building this team, his idea with his current board where they meet in smaller groups, uh, individually to, to discuss. That's something that has plagued my brain in the entire couple of years that I've been on here, is how, how a team functions really well with such limited sort of ability to become a team, um, like any other team would. Uh, so I love that he found creative ways to do that and to get more, um, acquainted with his, his board and build more trust that way. And, and again, to echo everyone that has reached out, uh, or that, that I have heard from, who has any relation to Mr. Kirby or a colleague who has a relation or, um, has just wonderful things to say about his leadership, um, so, so I echo all the things there. I would love to hear more from him. Uh, Mr. Kinzer, I was, um, in, impressed with in, in his interview tonight and in his application. Um, he has a lot of, he has less superintendent experience, albeit, um, but a lot of in-the-school experience, and recently, I did not tease this out of his application, that he had a stint during COVID as a principal, an interim principal in a building every single day. Um, and that spoke to me through, through a lot of his answers, um, that clear connection to, to the day-to-day workings of the school, uh, clear desire to, to be in sync with the people who are still doing that work. He obviously had heavy emphasis, um, in my mind on relationship building, on listening. Um, and I liked his approach to even ask, if we, when we asked him to project his thoughts of what he thought of our district, to, to reserve essentially all of that, to, to admit very, that, that, that he has no ability to make a judgment. He doesn't, there's so much to learn, so much to get here first, um, and that he would lead with that. Um, and he was the one who said it would, not just a ninety-day plan, a year-plus plan of, of just getting to know Forest Hills, um, before coming in and helping to set direction. Again, he comes from also a similar demographic, I, I think, in the Oklahoma area. Um, I also like what he said about teacher voice, um, that teachers have to have voice, and that, and that action must follow, uh, voice or, 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 or feedback, and that action is imperative, uh, to making people understand that you are hearing them and that you're, you're listening to what they have to say. Again, for Dr. Fee, I, I would love to bring her back as well. I would, I would put her, her on the list. Um, she, she talked a lot about diversity a, a, as well, and her intentionality toward diversity and equity. Um, I had to look up what the, the BELL framework, uh, was, building equitable learning environments, that, that structured around her strategic plan. Um, I, I like her emphasis on that. Uh, and, and again, echoing most of what was already said, not nearly at the top of the list, but also, as was mentioned, a local and somebody with a lot of Kent County connections, a lot of KISD knowledge and connections, um, and that, that probably would not be seen as a bad thing. And again, the people who have worked with her in Kent County that, that I have happened by, um, in the last forty-eight hours, um, all enjoyed, spoke very highly of her. So that round on my list.
Thank you. Go ahead, remember.
Um, I'm not as, one way or another, as other people, so I will.
One more thing, I also.
Mary, we're next. With words.
I'm not as good with words as people. I'm a math student, but I would have to say, I agree with everybody so far that Ben Kirby, I definitely want to bring back and get some more. Um, I pretty much loved everything he had to say, all positives. But when I was looking at all the candidates, who I have to agree, everyone was strong, seems like a good communicator, well-spoken and passionate about what they do. All of them had teaching experience, which was important, and administrative, administrative experience, and then superintendent experience. Um, but I, what I loved most about Ben Kirby was how he talked about staff, building staff that he already has, um, making sure new staff that come in are well-supported. Um, and he talked about student voice a lot and how he gets student voices, not just those that are natural leaders, but those that maybe aren't seen. Um, so to me, when I was looking at everybody, I was thinking always about culture and community and belonging, and I thought he spoke very well on those, those aspects. Um, his communication, close loop communication, I liked that, that he always followed through and hear the whispers before the screen. So it means to me that he's proactive in his communication. So yes, I agree with everybody, I'm bringing Ben Kirby back, and I would say, I would like to know more about Dr. Kinzer. Um, I appreciate that he's been in similar schools of ours, same type of leader. And what I heard from him and within his application was that he is big on culture and building staff, taking action on staff ideas, um, and bringing and communicating with lots of different voices. Um, so I want to ask, you know, find out more about that, and I really appreciated his honesty on his journey of diversity, equity, inclusion, because I think that is hard to talk about. Um, if you, if, to, to say that you haven't always been that big a candidate and talk about his journey, um, and I really appreciated that about him. So those are the two candidates I can just say. Thank you.
I'll go next, Mary. Is it okay? You still writing your notes?
Yep, go ahead.
Sure. Um, I think for me, um, that I was gonna, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at three, but it's only because I think I wanted to know them better, and I'm interested in just hearing more, um, about, because I think some of the things that they said very piqued my interest, you know, and as we're, you know, forging a path for the future of Forest Hills, it was just really good to see them to know when I walked into this process, what I know that we needed is to hear each candidate come back and say, like, you know, I think they understand where our needs are, and then, you know, and then we ask the question. So I thought that was really, so this is in no particular order, but I too, um, would like to see Dr. Barry, Barry Kinzer back. I like when candidates come in and put their names first, that was a really big plus for me. I think he understands our challenges. I love that he sees, he can see the future. Um, he wants to build relationship first, then help develop the areas. I really like that first, you know, a lot of times people come in and just want to mess everything up or do it their way, and I felt like, because he's such a good listener, he actually takes the time, um, to, to do that, to build the relationships first, which would be great for our, all of our team members to know that their voices would be very heard and received and heard. Um, I love his passion for students. I love his answer of the dreaming big, was very positive, and I think this is something that we, our students struggle with, with what to do afterwards, and was very open about, about that and, um, you know, just to kind of say, we don't think too, I think was removing the anxiousness and the competitiveness in that, and to actually allow the students to just breathe and, and to, you know, hear him say that his daughter was up late, you know, and struggling over that, and I too, you know, I've been there. So, um, and so just finding different ways for the students to dream big and have, um, their passions, you know, to, to, to be citizens and to do what they want to do for the future. Um, you know, um, I feel he's more comfortable in high-pressure management, because, I mean, I just, you know, it's very just, you know, nervousy, was when he got here, and then all of a sudden he just settled right then, you know what I mean? Like, you know, so I thought that was. Um, I actually, um, I wanted to hear back more from Alan Cummings. Um, I, I think he understood our challenges too. I like that he was experienced in finance, curriculum, and bonds. He's a long-range plan planner. I like the fact that he's, um, passionate to tackle our challenges. I felt like he, you know, was eager for that, um, implement, right, pass forward for the future. Um, he knows how to engage and bring community together effectively, and some of the things that he's done, and I really appreciate that, and partnering with community in the mentoring program. So, um, I would just, you know, I like, it's like, now I have more questions, you know, like, I feel like we just got a little bit of that, you know, taste of that from him. So, um, hang on a second. Sorry, I had to redo my, there we are, I had to do my notes. And, um, my last one is, is Benjamin Kirby. I think, I'm like Maggie, I think when I read on, um, when we were reading all of the applications, I, I felt like what he wrote on paper is what we saw, you know, there at the table. And I love family first, I love that he's experienced in HR, transportation, finances, curriculum, um, he's had similar demographic, um, to the large district. I love how he engages with community. I like how he pulls businesses in for kids, you know, for, to, to engage, so all those paths about dreaming big and going forward for the kids for the future, he's winning, um, he's a connector, um, for that. He did his homework on us in understanding, um, what our needs are and how to implement those. Um, I love the story, the preciousness of him, how he redirected the food source during the pandemic and found a way to reach out to community. And I think during that time, he brought a sense of normalcy to our communities while they were going through a time of uncertainty. And I just thought, he handles really high pressure very well. On paper, I know I asked Dave a question, is this, is he a very positive person, and that showed through on that, so I figured during high pressures that, you know, these remain. Um, I love his balance in knowing the business of education, of all the experiences he's had. I loved how he handled the Oxford situation. Um, I think, um, I think what he did is he leaned into understanding the safety procedures that they put in place during that time, and he was comfortable enough to say, what we put in place is safe for their kids, and we're gonna keep it open, however, we're gonna offer help to those who just feel some uncertainty. And I just thought that was just a implementing a plan that they had put in action, and he followed through with it without driving fear into the equation, and I really appreciated that. Um, I love different creative solutions, very positive, handling high pressures and, um, raising future leaders. I mean, it was, you know, like, it was very, and I'd like to hear more, so, yeah. Thank you. Okay, my turn. I just thought I could just cry. You guys make me so proud, and you can cry to your team. I mean, there's nothing I can say.
I mean, there's nothing I can say that you haven't said. Maybe just being bold, I got to tap this into the resource pools, but I'm just very proud to pray your team. I agree with everything you all said. Just to kind of put a little icing, kind of pick at what CJ said. It's very interesting that not one of the candidates that we talked to interviewed at any other school, and that's exactly how our last two superintendents came to Forest Hills. So for those of us that like to look back to our history, here we go again. We still have whatever it takes to draw people here, and we are an amazing district. There's phenomenal people coming here, going to take care of our kids. I was so unsettled as I drove home because I thought for the life of me, I could not hear a downer's call. And then I finally got the wherewithal to say, this is a high-class problem. And I trust this board and whoever this board says is going to work for me. But what's very ironic, just to jump ahead, my two are Ben Kirby and Gary Kinzer. I told Dave I feel a little frustrated because I didn't get to process Gary the same way, but all of what you said, I liked that he liked the family, the way that he connected with our group right away. And his experience said is comparable to other leaders, if not a little more. So I would just like to get to know him a little more. As far as Mr. Kirby, you know, we all had to set our own priorities. And experience is huge, you know, our community said that in their profile. And we all kind of said that, that this is not a starter district. We don't want to come out of nowhere. And certainly Mr. Kirby has the most of that. He also, we heard every candidate say that that three-high-school thing is a challenge. And I kind of smelled like, I didn't think so, but I guess if you don't know any better, it is. And he has some experience in a district that was sub-lying, had two bicycles, had two no schools and eight elementarys. So just the fact that he's already cut his teeth on that a little bit comes into the door with a little bit of experience. Just whether I say it now or later, because it sounds like he'll be coming back to visit us, everybody knows somebody somewhere. And we, Chris and I both got a call that there was an Orient, Lake Orient Board member that wanted to chat with one of us. And so I don't know if you ever did, I chatted with him. And it was neat, the thing that caught my eye right away is he said, this is a man that just wants to make sure he gets consensus. And so he will find all of this information and vet it out before he ever proposes something to his board, his community, his staff, his whatever. And I love what CJ loved, is that he tries to find a way to connect with each board member through the month, these two- and three-person teams for a teaching, learning experience, you know, to make sure you know what you're working with and there's no surprises. So that, I think, with the onboard that I forgot to mention today, what a great opportunity for us to keep learning and make sure that we're always engaged and there are no surprises and we go forward to take care of our kids. It was also interesting, because as you know, I have, through this process, taken advantage of connecting with some of our retired administrators that might still be consulting in the field. And I think it's simply because Mr. Kirby has come a little closer to the side of the state. Nobody interacted with any of the other candidates, so it's not a negative against them. But a couple of them had crossed paths with him. And one of them said, when he was in Ionia, he had a very challenging job with a divided board and staff culture. He wasn't superintendent, but was incredibly effective in dealing with alparies. He went to a great challenge at Forest Hills. So what it's worth is just kind of nice to catch up with people with different experience sets and we can all bring whatever we want to, or take our, you know, under the table. But it's nice that somebody's sudden action is like that, who wants us to follow. Also, I think another thing that has scored up is we did all of those event forms from our community. And pretty resonantly, people really liked Mr. Kirby. I mean, I don't think anybody disliked anybody. There were a few people that said no, but I mean, whether it was staff, parents, a couple that I didn't know, pretty much had the thoughts at the table. So that's comforting, but we obviously seem to be in line with our community. So I would also be glad to say that Mr. Kirby is a really good candidate.
Okay, so going through the tally, Mr. Kirby, and would like to be seated by everyone. So I think that's an obvious one. Dr. Kinzer by four of you, so that's the majority. And typically, we have a cutoff line. And then you have this Dr. Fee that she was being Mrs. Fee before she... They were doctor, doctor just recently, so Dr. Fee had three votes. Typically speaking, you would not have a candidate involved in the process that does not have the majority of the board's support. But obviously, that's up to this board to discuss.
Yeah, I, and that makes sense. You definitely want to have a majority of the board interested. There are two and a half, like maybe one little sort of...
Yes.
Maybe. Does everybody feel comfortable with inviting Mr. Kirby and Dr. Kinzer and having that PR too, since those are the two that presumably came out with a majority of the board? Or would people like to discuss adding in Dr. Fee?
I would.
You would?
Okay. Because you know, that's how I roll. Let's discuss it. I certainly would have put her on my list. She was very comparable to Dr. Kinzer, and I probably should have said that. But like I said, I called enough, it just didn't give me a chance to process it closely. But there's certainly people that are typing this through that really would maybe Dr. Fee too. So I don't know, I might revisit how the board looks again, whenever we don't want to do it.
And then we had one clarification we did that.
Of course.
Talked about three votes. It was, I don't know, two and a half is that's the airball, three?
You said just...
Three.
Perfect.
But, yeah, so, three votes.
Oh, three votes, yes.
All right.
So it was one shy in our initial polling. And just, you know, I know some people only voted for one. Magna only voted for one, for instance.
I mean, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that there were not others that I can talk about, but it wouldn't be any of the things that we already would mention. So I don't think that's really a worthwhile conversation.
And in my mind, to qualify an already qualified voter, in saying, should Dr. Fee come and be, and have three of them, is there something that she would tell us or something that would come out in the second interview that would make me like of the other two people that do have majority opinions on or feel that she would be even a better fit than the fits that, you know, four or more of us feel the other two are?
I feel like she gave incredibly thorough, well-schaffled answers. I mean, to be quite honest, maybe some of them more thorough of the five. So I don't know, for me, that I would necessarily need to hear a lot more.
Right, right.
That being said, I think the other ones, like I think Mr. Kirby gave very thorough answers as well. But he did just leave me with some more interesting questions.
Yeah, yeah. So again, my position is if it's, yeah, if it's not involved one to try to convince anybody of anything else, if it's three minutes, I think that's fine.
And I feel, yeah, I feel similarly, I'm like, you know, I had Dr. Fee on my list, but that's just me and I'm just one person. And we all know one person does not make any sort of decision. And I'm definitely willing to go with the majority consensus. If everybody else is comfortable with the two that already got majority votes, then I'm perfectly happy going forward with that. If there are people that were like, oh, I almost said Fee and I would like to hear more, then I, then that's, that's great too.
I think if Dr. Kinzer comes back, I would really like to hear more from him. I thought sometimes, I would love to hear more information, just to settle those questions. A little bit more expansive.
I would like to hear more from him too. He's just saying, it's like, I don't know.
Not long-winded, are you?
Yeah, I think I'm in favor for listening for top, the top two that we just kind of, you know, you know, brought forward. And it seemed like every time somebody talked about either one of these, that the passion was definitely there for us to like to hear more. And, you know, I mean, I'd be in favor of just bringing the two back.
You did. Feel free to chime in if you're comfortable with the two or if you're like, you know what, I would like to hear a little bit more and I would like to bring in three.
I'm also just thinking in my head objectively, the only real counterargument to not having her come back is that it is a little more time for us to hear from somebody else, you know, three against two. There's, I can see the school of thought of saying, you know, why not take more information in? In case, if there is something that comes out of that presentation or those questions that really would ring with us. I mean, obviously, we're looking for who is the best, best, best fit that we could find. Again, in my head, she's on that list of people that could be that. So that's my only other thought is what could we lose by having her come do more for us, except some of our time? But again, not...
I guess it'd be honest too with ourselves about what would be the likelihood that...
Well, exactly.
You would...
I completely agree, exactly. Is there something that she would do that would, we feel she would do, that would put her as number one over the other two? And I don't know that there is, I don't know, yeah.
Well, I would be more inclined to have three over two for that reason. There is something different. We have a ninety-minute presentation. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. Presentation on ninety, the first ninety days from any candidate, and that's really not what we've had. So I would be more in favor of, what do we lose? Like you said, CJ, some of our time. And we have already put in time and we are willing to put in time. So that's how I feel about it. I mean, I'd be interested to hear more of that. And I hear that. I also want to be respectful of everybody's time, our time and the candidate's time. So to like what CJ was saying is if we don't feel that we would probably hear enough from her based on what we already know of the other two candidates that we do want to bring for sure back, do we want to put everybody through those paces for something that is likely not to happen? I want to be respectful of everybody's time and effort in that minibus.
Yeah, I think I really did like about Dr. Fee too. And I would say that she's a good word. So for what that's worth, I liked, she said, you can't lead yourself if you don't understand. I understand that very personally in my leadership positions. The fact that she talked, she was a natural fit, she seemed passionate about DEIDU and student mental health. And I liked her global move because that is the way it's grown and understanding. So I did like a lot of her answers and I don't think for any more would be gapping.
I'm just wondering if it is amount of experience that might be what people are really thinking about here. And I just would encourage people to think that sometimes that, that might be okay.
Saying that she doesn't have a lot of...
As much as, say, the other candidates when it comes to superintendent, so. But there is superintendent experience.
Yeah, they're very comparable. I think she spent seven years and she has six. But being as said, go ahead.
In different sizes, but I think that's a reservation.
Right. Yeah, your point is a good one. Your point's a good one. I mean, right, it's hard to know a probability because it's impossible to know what somebody will come back and say. But right, so I, I'm not, no, I'm the one who maybe got us into this. I'm not strongly, I don't feel strongly that she would, that we need to have three, that actually we need to be able to, I think that objectively makes sense that we have two people who we are generally consensusing around would be really good fits and we'd be happy with maybe either of them. So right, is a third person in the mix, you know, I've heard of it in some ways, is, isn't it?
All right, let me just confuse this really bad. I wasn't thinking numbers. I would just think we're thinking discussion. I think had we interviewed all the candidates at the same time or had the time to process Dr. Kinzer, I would have done a magnitude. So technically, I'd have done three and three, so then you just said one. But like I told Dave, I would have liked the time to sit and process all of them together and did not feel that I had that time. So I'm not trying to complicate things. I just simply make a comment that I also like Dr. Kinzer. I just didn't have a lot of time to process any of the other candidates. So I'm sorry, I'm not trying to make it more complicated. I thought Dr. Fee was great too. They have comparable experience. They have comparable exposure or experience in districts like ours, so, yeah.
It's hard because I mean, I...
I'm sorry.
My second choice is, is Rick Seager. But to me, Ben Kirby just was so far up here that that to me feels like why I said the one that I did, knowing that, you know, there'll be some other names that came out. No, I think there's no, no one else said Mr. Seager at this point. So to me, that's not necessarily worth the conversation, I don't, I don't think at this point. But Kirby to me just was so high on the list that I felt like that was what I wanted to spend my time talking about.
Can I ask a question? The time that we spend with the candidates, asking additional questions, how much time do we log into for that? If we choose two, do it's as an equal timer, do we get, you know, are we, like what we just had?
It'll be similar to a seventy-five minute interview again.
After their presentation?
No, twenty minutes of seventy-five would be...
Oh, I thought it was an addition. Okay.
Then roughly an hour with everybody you can.
Okay.
I think for me, I personally would just, unless you're trying to see the two, I want time. This was like five and was, you know, I'd like to process. And I think we're going to get it down and I really want to focus on where we go this way or this way. I would like to have the time to get the feedback from the community and actually lean in and really sink in, you know, I mean, into, you know, we're going this way or this way. And that's just personally for me, I think, just having like, you know, thinking things through more clearly, not knowing that's three candidates, but just so it's two candidates that we actually can really zero in on and hone in on to be a little bit more, you know. And I just, I don't know if I'm using the right word, meaningful, but just, you know, kind of really, I don't want to, you know, like tons and tons and tons of notes. I want to be very specific, you know, like the questions that we're asking and really kind of hone on, you know, what is going to be the best fit for Forest Hills? So that, and that would just be my preference to say, you know.
And remember, it's not just the interview. They'd also be coming in in the district and hearing tours, schools.
So it's a, it's a larger investment. Exactly. It's a large investment. And I just think that, you know, and I don't want to mislead somebody who already know that the process is there, that we feel it's, that we're just doing it because, you know, or, you know, whatever. I want it, I want it to be intentional, what we're doing. And I don't want to drag somebody along for the ride if we already know that where we're heading. I just think it's unfair.
Well, when you say mislead someone, then it's the, it's implying that any of us already know then. Because I just think that every one of those candidates wants to be our superintendent. They did not apply elsewhere. They are ready to do what it takes to try to get this position. If we say we want to be respectful of their time and that's why we wouldn't have a third candidate walk through, I don't think that is their concern. I think they want to be here no matter what. So if we are saying we only want to look at two candidates, it's because decisions seem to have been made as to not wanting a certain candidate already. But I mean, that is part of this process. You are going to start eliminating everything that every single way.
We've already not been to the candidates.
Well, and that's a good perspective though, that I might offer kind of in the reverse logic. I think what we're all after at the very end of this process is all seven of us agreeing confidently on one individual. So again, not just beginning to pour, I don't think, that's obviously, you know, we all understand that. Is there anyone with a strong feeling right now that Dr. Fee just isn't the right fit? And that hearing more would not change that, because maybe that could guide us?
I love that question, CJ, and I want to throw out one other one too. At this point, it seems like most of us do have a lead horse here. And I think that seems to also be coming across clearly. So I know that we want to revisit a couple candidates. Two would be ideal, of course, and so I'm just suggesting that three is a possibility as well. But one is a possibility as well. So I'm saying, you know, we're trying to come to a consensus here and I don't think we should ignore the fact that it seems every single one of us has mentioned a particular candidate. And I'm not saying we skip a second round of interviews, but I do want to point that one out. So when we're saying, oh, well, we've kind of already made some choices to eliminate certain candidates, it's also interesting to see that we certainly have somebody that we, all seven, would like to talk to again for seeing...
I agree with that. I mean, we all said one candidate might not be the top of all of our candidates. But I think a big piece is leading our district in recruiting and having them meet them. And so I agree, I'd rather have more than one. To give us opportunity. And yes, two, they all want to be here. So I think they will want to come and sell themselves and tell us why they should be here and fight for that. So I don't, yeah, I don't know that I would be wasting my time. I think they would want to fight for that opportunity.
And even to that end, then we should... And even to that end, then we should bring all five of them back. Because they all want to be here. No, I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate, yeah.
But I mean, if there were, there were two that are kind of right around that majority, or right in the middle.
Two, I understand, yes. I just, I, I under, I agree with what Chris was saying. With, is three necessary when we really have a coalesced around to lead up them solidly? And two, it seems like we have.
Well, for the certification, and so Chris just doesn't really say this. I didn't realize numbers would be an exciting factor. I thought we were going to play our voices to who we supported and then discuss, is it two or three? So that's why I had to pull back a little bit. I hate the idea that a few of us like one candidate, we feel like the other, and because one got one more tucked than the other, because that's what we saw at the table, sorry. So knowing that it seems there's three people that we're all looking at, what would we all like to do? Is it worth bringing on three of them or, and I know it should be the four-three, but I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking of it. I was simply thinking we were going to discuss, are all three of these people, throwing up candidates, just that we'd like to talk to all of them? Or do we definitely think that two of them? I mean, CJ, you said close third. I simply only said, um, who's Dr. Kinzer, because I, you know, didn't have a chance to process, and I like Dr. Fee. So if those are the names on the table, how do we go from here?
I don't think we need to do a meaningful necessarily, I mean, because we, the idea of putting, and that wasn't really a vote, it was just putting out, right, but putting out who it is everybody was interested in. And I mean, I think a lot of people, maybe not everybody, but everybody had some that they liked better than others. And maybe, you know, just, you know, like for instance, I said Kirby and Dr. Fee, but I also liked Kinzer. I just didn't happen to say his name. So like, I was not telling her, there's somebody else that from there, and then she, she went, Dr. Fee, but didn't say her name. So, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a numbers game. It's a, all right, we, we've got it down to, I'm just going to use last names out of my guess for that. Kirby, Fee, and Kinzer. Do we feel, do, are we coalescing around the fact that we, you know, there is enough interest among the board to invite all three of them back to hear more? Or is there not enough interest to bring all three in, and only enough interest to bring two?
Well, I'd like to say, because I wasn't sure if it was really understood there. My mentioning of why bring back anyone if it seems like there's just one was actually just part of an argument to say why I think we should have three candidates.
Yes, I, I didn't take that to mean that we should only bring one.
Well, there was, there was a strong reaction, so I thought maybe that wasn't understood.
I think, is there anybody who feels that Dr. Fee could come in and completely change her mind? Especially if she wasn't on your list, again, for whatever the list means and the numbers mean. But if she's not in your top two, you know, already, is there anything that she could come in and do that you think could vault her into your top one? And if the answer to that is no, then does that mean that we would never have seven oh in favor of that? Again, excluding the possibility that, yes, anybody could come in and say anything and put on, you know, a magical thing and change everybody's minds. But if that's not a realistic thing, and we're looking for all seven of us to feel strongly about one person, again, can anybody eliminate that they would be somebody who could feel strongly about Dr. Fee already?
You know, I think, I think that all of, all five of the candidates were very strong candidates. I think it would be fair to say that some interviewed better than others. And some had stronger backgrounds in one area, others had a stronger background in another area. They all had something that they could bring to the table. So I guess I would feel that it's maybe not, is there something that a third person could bring in that would make you like them better? It's like, well, it's just yet another opportunity for a conversation, because you never know what's going to happen. They may come and blow, you know, blow you away, or somebody that you thought you really liked could just fall flat on their face, you know, and, you know, say something really ridiculous. You just never know what's going to happen. Obviously, you hope that all of them come in are super well-prepared and do an amazing job, and we have a really hard discussion, again, two weeks from now. But I think maybe because there are, you know, three people that have garnered enough support among, you know, enough of the board members, that it might make sense to bring back all three and let them shoot their shot.
I thought this was a good one.
Anybody feel strongly the other way?
It's fine, it's fine. I don't need to die on this hill. I don't think that I need to hear from all three of them, but again, if that's what, you know, a lot of the tables would like to do, I can agree with that. But again, I don't think it's going to necessarily change my opinion.
And it's definitely not, I don't want to die, and I just want to make sure that everybody's comfortable with who we bring back, and they don't feel like, I, I really wanted to hear from this person and I didn't get to because it was cut out from under me. I want, I want everybody to make sure that they feel good about what's going to happen in the next round. And could I ask you a question? Are there logistical issues with bringing back three that we would need to be aware of or consider?
There can be, because you're probably not going to do three interviews one night. And it's always nice to see the final two back to back, because it's fresh in everybody's mind. Even that twenty-four hours can make a difference. We will have, we have scheduled an open house for the nineteenth, if my date's correct here. Probably have all three candidates come to that open house, and then somebody would come back on the twentieth for an interview. We can make that work. I think that the big thing, and I think it was brought up, is that if you bring three back, which is just fine, and it's certainly a forward decision, is that as you go through this next step of the process, everybody has to keep an open mind as we move forward, on all three of them. So yes, it could work.
Well, I would say that Mr. Kinz, uh, Mr. Dr. Kinzer, thank you. I was like, I knew something was wrong here. Um, Dr. Kinzer was not in my top three, but I am absolutely open-minded to hear and see what there is to be presented. So just, just mentioning that one, that it wasn't such a simple two, in my opinion. So.
I guess the, I guess the only other maybe angle to consider was that Dr. Fee was nobody's top two. I, I guess I don't know that. She was not mentioned first, saying this was my resounding number one person who I believe could be our superintendent. I want to hear back from her. So again, if that factors into it, because if it was anybody's number one inclination.
I don't think anybody's...
And to be fair, yes, you're right, you're right. So I don't need to apply that either. You mentioned coalescing. Yeah, you're right, so I guess neither of them helped.
Can you walk us through what three candidates, it's like the next three versus two, like with the time? What would look like with going to schools and, you know, the different things that we're doing?
Yeah, we would invite each candidate in to spend about a half a day in the district. And have them finalize those plans. That, um, the L nine, as we talked about, we did how we might make that work. Typically, we have two board members, take them around the district, and visit several schools. We have a disciple school, so sorry about that. But then we talked about, well, after that visitation, the two board members, and then meeting the board president, joins them for a lunch. We should have three lunches in our office. But that's what we do, because they all be on different dates, and we have to find different dates for those to work. Obviously, work with their schedules as well. That's next week sometimes, when that would happen.
No, yeah, weekends, no, the next week.
That's the visitation week then. Following week, we have interviews scheduled for Tuesday and Wednesday. So we would have the open house still on Tuesday, because we reserve sites and so forth. We'd have all three candidates come into the open house. And it truly is an open house where people can come in and talk to each individual candidate. We would ask that, we have some board members there to help us see how that moves forward, how the people interact with each other, gather some info from the audience that's there and so forth, just casual conversation. Two would still interview that night on Tuesday, and we'd have a third one come back on that Wednesday night for...
And as we keep talking about this, I, I hate having convenience enter the equation for who we are trying to find as our leader in all of our districts. And I do like the, I mean, what you're presenting to us, where we have to hear from two one night, we have to hear from one the following night, and then decide. And in terms of, you know, a fair process, a process where all of our brains are in the same place at the same time, is it cleaner to have two people that we feel strongly about so that we can do it in one setting, you know, in all the same timeframe and all together? I, I don't know, I don't know if that, again, not that convenience should discount somebody, you know, whose potential is...
Is it not possible to have a longer day and all three in one day?
You'd be having somebody who starts their interview like at eight thirty.
I mean, start the day earlier.
But then people might not be able to attend and all of that.
If we, if we did that, Valerie, we would not have the open house the same day as the interviews, because we want the open house where people can get to it, usually later in the afternoon is the possibility.
And you can't interview before, have the open house. Is that just not how it works?
I think, I think you would want the open house beforehand, because it's just additional information that can help you make a decision after the last interview. Because we will be asking you to make a decision after those last interviews. Could you do the open house on a different day? That's, that's a possibility. So potentially, you could have the open house on that Monday or Tuesday, and have interviews Tuesday or Wednesday. I would probably say, I think we already have two interviews set aside, right? So Tuesday, we have the open house, because we have a facility set. Wednesday would be then three interviews, and yes, I mean, I can start earlier.
Could we do the open house before our normally scheduled board meeting on the eighteenth? We have a board meeting that starts at seven PM on the eighteenth. Well, we already have those days. Right, I'm saying open house before. No, I'm just saying if we talked about doing the open house a different day, and then putting three interviews into one day on Tuesday.
But again, should the schedules and things be driving this?
I'm going to make a suggestion. Looking at the long view, the long view is when we get to our final candidates, we want to be able to get to a seven or vote. That is the goal. That's what we hope will come of this, is that we're all going to coalesce around the same person. I think in that, because that's what we're looking for, I think bringing in somebody that only had three votes out of the first round makes that a long shot for that person. I think it might make more sense to just stick with the two that already had a majority votes in this first round, after we've already, you know, we've looked through all of their application materials. We've, you know, heard for references, we've done interviews. There were two that got the majority vote, and since that is what we're hoping to get consensus later, that maybe we stick with those two.
Okay, so just one little thing I want to point out of that, because it's my understanding from what Mary had said earlier is, guess what, Mary, you're kind of a swing vote. Because you said your decision would have been different had you known that it was going to be this vote thing. So really, we've got three and three. And ambiguous?
Mary, do you have thoughts on those?
But then we're pressuring her as opposed to just thinking...
I would rather get to two, because I'm the one that said I'd come with having a person tonight on their own. So I love the idea of two. I don't know that I have a preference which way that would go. My, like I said, I expressed who I would like to see again, period. But you also made a comment that you had an extra third. So you know what I mean? You're like, I also have an afterthought, so I mean, I, I just wish everybody would say, are we all comfortable saying where do we think we should be and see if the numbers come out differently? And I guess go back to the numbers. Yes? Need some help here.
But I think Chris brings up a good point, if the whole goal is to try, because you've said before, candidates who see that there's a little bit of, you know, like it's a three-four vote, or, you know, whatever vote that, a lot of times that they won't, you know what I mean? Like you had mentioned that before, that they'd like to see that the board that we're working with is all agreement that this person is the one that they want to bring to the school.
I think that's the end.
So I said, right, I'm, I know, I understand that, but, I mean, personally for me, I mean, I, I would rather do the two, but I, I think that's just because I'm looking at the thought, the process that we're going through for this, and focusing on the candidates, and really giving us the time and the means to do what we do. I think, you know, it's, we keep adding choices to, to the mix, I think, what's going to do. I mean, just, I just don't personally what it will do, you know, I mean, for my thought process, but, you know, it is a team effort here, so.
Well, after all, my thought said I was three, and really thinking about that three versus one. I do agree that two is a better number to have in your final interviews. But I also just wanted to make it really clear that I do see that as a three-three, and, and a gray area in the middle there. So if we agree we want to, then we have to make a decision now. And really, that decision isn't one of votes. It is, we have to hash that out, who will be the second candidate?
We need a couple, a couple things just to complement this issue even more. Lords have drawn one candidate. We talked about that earlier through this process. However, we've, we've been having my board of people under this, okay? So that's a possibility. If I have heard people correctly tonight, I heard CJ waiver on his third choice a little bit. And I heard Mary had a third choice after the open. So if we went back to the original numbers and took out any wavering, it would have really been four-two for those two candidates. I don't want to put words in people's mouth, but that's what I heard sitting here. I may not have heard correctly. But again, it has to be a forward decision moving forward.
I think this has been good discussion and worth the time to try to think of this academically and from all the angles we have. I'm, I'm comfortable suggesting that we, that we have two for a number of reasons. At the end of all of that discussion, I would submit that we would bring two, Mr. Kirby and Dr. Kinzer back for a final second round interview. As the person who was wavering that got us maybe into all of this mess. And afterward, after, okay, after, good discussion. I, I'm quite comfortable proposing that.
I don't have a dog in the race, so.
And I mean, and I do have a dog in the race, in the sense that I was one of the ones who said I would like to bring Dr. Fee back. But I am also perfectly okay going, you know what? There is more consensus around Dr. Kinzer than there is Dr. Fee, and that's okay. I, I want to make sure that we have consensus as a board. And so I am perfect, you know, and I think Dr. Kinzer was lovely. I think he did a great job. You know, part of my hesitation even in the first place was just that he was so great. He did a lot of examples. Bringing him back a second time will allow him to expand on some of those ideas.
In fact, if he brings a ton to the table, all finals that bring a ton to the table, that's what we've acknowledged with the two that we, that we have whittled away from initially. So it's not, there's nothing, is our next leader in one of those two that we're coalescing around? I mean, I would firmly believe that one of those two very well is the, the next leader. I feel confident in that. So, yeah, in that, I think, and again, I think two makes a very fair and, and good process for a final assessment.
Yes, I, I think the third one, having to balance this and shift it over a couple of days, it's, it's just not, it's not a level playing field for everybody. And I would much rather have it be a level playing field. So CJ, a little bit ago, I heard you say that you think that you would suggest that we invite them back. Are you making a formal motion to invite Mr. Kirby and Dr. Kinzer?
Yes, I would, I would move that we extend second interviews to Mr. Ben Kirby and Dr. Yes, I would, I would move that we extend second interviews to Mr. Ben Kirby and Dr. Kenzer.
And I would like to second that as a vote of confidence in those are our two candidates.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Could we have a?
Yes. Dr. Majer.
Yes.
This is May Meyer.
Yes.
This is DeBor.
Yes.
This is, um, this is Cobell.
Yes.
Dr. Fawcett.
Yes.
This is Ryan.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. This was.
Can you give me five minutes, please? I'll be right back.
Okay.
We've got to talk about maybe as far as the scheduling of the visitation could be important for whoever's expecting for a virtual salary with that. And then, is that luncheon idea doable?
Yeah.
Thank you, folks.
I think the three sets will be called the candidates.
Thanks for being here, you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for you guys. I have the press release right now, so I don't need to send anything to you.
I just want to share.
Okay, I will. I didn't need to send anything.
Just correctionally. No, they understood. But I just, you have such a real interest, I don't want them to be here like back channel for who we're here for. Just because I'm applying doesn't have to do anything.
I wondered that.
I don't want them to be here for somebody else. So, yeah. 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 I know what I've said, that consideration would be important, so obviously it will be fine.
Oh, not you for salaries, sorry.
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to see.
Mallory's like, oh, three.
You value silence. Can't paraphrase.
Yes.
I have that happen, I think it's my first time.
Yeah, but it's a short one.
And that's why I wanted to call you.
You value silence. Can't paraphrase.
Yes.
I have a picture of the chief.
Oh.
That's what I said. I have that happen, I think.
Yeah, but it's a short one.
And that's why I wanted to call you.
Because they're like, oh.
So maybe a little bit more time.
Yeah.
I'll tell you.
We're just in the.
Oh, what? That was a long term, but I know what you mean.
Words. What's the explore of our school districts?
Well, yeah. I would say that one of our candidates, I thought, no, no, no.
I know if it's appropriate, I thought it's true.
So that's why I wanted to know.
I just want to make sure that you have.
Have a good night. See you. Thank you for all your work. Appreciate your service.
Thank you for being so kind.
It's a long, it's a long night. It's a long time, but I appreciate it.
Yes.
My dad is still a warm-up rep. I have prepared some.
This is Dave's fault, we're in this. This is a great candidate.
But just thank you, thank you for your work, and I'll see you soon.
Yeah, right.
Thanks for coming out and being a part of this, everybody.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's fascinating. It's amazing. Now to the part where we don't.
God, I thought they brought in three. But I think they made a good choice. But the one that we were just talking about surprised me, that nobody even talked about Seeger. There was Seeger, there was some things about him that I thought, oh, these would really fit in with some of the thoughts, but he wasn't even brought up, or he may have been brought up. Yeah.
I know, that's why you know your goal.
I brought a question tonight.
I have it, I have it all in my mind.
I forgot mine, I gotta grab it.
I mean, did that thing even like, is it a sin ingrained in it?
Nope, it started to happen. This is boy, it's open news. Just digging. That's all, of course, they're proud of it.
Two percent left on my phone.
Why, why you were just itching, right?
No, I, I know, I'm sorry.
Put this up for the thing, you're here to be one of the first.
Oh, yeah. No, that's, which I guess, like, you form the other people.
Ben at five thirty, Kirby at five thirty, Kinser at seven. So you're gonna get a K either when you look at it.
Yep. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here for so long. This is a lot of hours.
I'm glad you did my two, because I thought three, because what's gonna happen, the third person's gonna get more favoritism, because she's the last one.
Yeah. Or everybody's too tired to listen to them, and they don't get hurt, yeah.
Good job. So how do you feel, Julie? You asked that point blank.
I'm like stuck in this reclined position. It's just terrible.
Ah. Yep. But it's gotta be a relief, because as I said, if it was gonna be three, or it's gonna be, if you look at it that way, it's only a third less than what, almost a third less than what they had. Sixty percent! I told you, you wouldn't sit in my chair.
Okay, we have Mr. Kirby, I have Dr. Kenzer, and I have Dr. Kenzer. There you go. You made a decision already. I'll order the two details with the knowledge, help as soon as we can get those visitations scheduled, so they can come here, like I said, and. Probably thirty, forty minutes. They're high school, college, four, five schools, calling. They've got a good time, they've got the central office administrators as well. And again, board members, you're just kind of monitoring the discussion and the conversation that's going on. The building principals should be alerted that they should do the tour, and they want to stop and go classroom two with that they can highlight, to show facilities a little bit so far. So we're, we're looking at some of the soft skills, you know, how they approach people, how they talk to people, kind of questions they have, are they afraid of little kids or big kids, that kind of stuff. And then, the luncheon idea, I think we've used that several different places, that two board members that went on the tour, which would add into Dr. Fawcett, would then meet someplace for hour, hour and a half lunch, and gives you another opportunity to have some discussion with that candidate. So you get to know them a little bit personally.
Now, are we planning on those tours both being on the same day, or they'll be different days?
We're gonna have to do them different days if we're gonna do the luncheon.
Right.
Unless you're gonna eat a lot that day.
And I was wondering, because it was something that I mentioned earlier, like, depending on people's availability and interest, is it possible to sort of split it up so we have some people that, that go with them to a couple of schools, and a couple other people that go to other places, and then switch so that everybody has a chance to interact with each one of them?
We, we could, if we think that'll work. I, I remember in Cooperstown, because all their schools are on the same campus, they actually had different board members meet in the different buildings as they went around, because you couldn't have more than three.
Right.
So you gotta watch that. And then, if we can figure out a handoff system like that, and everybody's available, I don't have any problem with that.
Do you have any, did they indicate at all which days next week would work?
No, I haven't talked about, I was gonna say your availability and push them towards those dates if we can.
Okay. I think, did everyone send, I know I sent.
So I have Maggie's and Tristan Cobell's. Mallory, you said, no due to your work schedule?
I could make it.
You can make it work? Okay.
Is it essentially next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Well, you need to do it next week, and that's what we're trying to figure.
I'll send you mine, because I had to finalize some events.
Okay, so just maybe email me tonight, and then we can connect tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wanna get this scheduled quickly, because they may have to clear their calendars to make it work too. Because remember, they're gonna be kicking off most of that day, and I'm sure they'd rather start in the morning, and so get back in their district case something came up or whatever.
Finance next to story.
And then, they've got the open house on the nineteenth, so they'll be here early for that. Again, that's, that'll be in the.
Finer center. What time does that start again?
I, we thought three thirty to five, and we could do it three to four thirty, what works better?
For the reception?
Yeah.
Well, you tell us, like, I mean, in general, how, how attended is this? I don't want them standing around.
You know, it's, it's amazing, it's, it's usually fairly well attended, but I don't make any guarantees, you know, your public better than I do.
Five thirty is the start time of the interview?
Well, we can do five or five thirty to start.
Let's do five, because I feel like we've been running long. Our press release is just saying.
Yeah, let's.
Elizabeth, have you done the press release? Have you sent it?
No, it has not been sent.
I think we should do five.
For interviews?
I do, because like, we've been running long, and then we just have to discuss that evening.
The night, the night.
And we've been starting at five the last few days. Make sure to use your mic. All right. All right. I had second round of interviews, and we're just waiting for the nine, so we know your votes.
Or you're saying spread them out? I thought you might move the whole schedule.
That's mine too. I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I just feel like we've been starting at five, and it's worked out just fine. And so whether we do that from five to six thirty, or five, seven, it doesn't really matter to me, I just think the only reason to wait that half an hour.
And four o'clock.
According to our schedule, it's just at five.
We have been going long, right? That's why I had to say, start them at five.
So five and six thirty the interviews would be? We would have open house from three to four thirty then?
Open house, open house three to four thirty, and then my second interview is five.
Second interview is six thirty.
Okay.
Three to four thirty, open house seven, nineteen.
That's on the nineteenth. And board members, remember, you're not conducting board business there, and you shouldn't be deliberating between each other, just to make that clear, but you're there for community members to come up to you and talk to you, and provide input, and how they feel. It just gives one more opportunity for the public to be included in this process.
And will we have the feedback forms and all of that, how we get to, not the questions, obviously, but are feedback forms?
Feedback forms, we can have at the open house. Questions, no. And, and they can fill us up, or they may just want to talk to you. And that's what, that's what we usually find.
I didn't even hear from this tech, so I think that's acceptable.
So five and seven, or five and six thirty?
Five and six thirty with the interviews. I just told them the other time, but I, I'll be talking to them again, so.
Well, they'll be.
Yeah.
How, can you clarify about what questions are due? You were asking about that.
I haven't talked about that yet.
Yes, and it, yes, and I've got people in the board asking, so, yeah.
Oh, the questions due from the audience, they're gonna be, anybody that still wants their tournament, and determined by the end of the day, even Laurel. Board members, can I have your questions by the end of the day, Monday?
And that's what I saw, it was the eighteenth, right? Yes. No, eleventh, I mean.
Eleven.
Okay.
That would give me time to do some work and kind of put things together with what the audience has submitted so far.
Do you want me to wait till you stop there, or do you want me to tell you right now? I, the only day I'm not available during the day in the morning for next week is finance. But after that.
Finance is Tuesday?
I wrote down, began at the schools in the morning, but it'll leave.
Right, so not Tuesday. Are you available though afternoon, Tuesday, not available the morning?
Well, I, I would say Friday, I'm, I'm available, and then Fri- Friday is the only time, and I got fear of a type, somebody's picking up some stuff at the studio, and I don't know if I can have a replacement, so that's the only one that's kind of.
So possibly not Friday.
So possibly Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, most of the days except for Friday.
But I was assuming you'd probably like to get these done earlier in the week, so that they're not gone in their district, Friday and Monday, or Friday?
Well, and again, some, that's gonna depend on their schedule, so if we can find some days at work, and Val and I'll talk in the morning, I'll get with the candidates and say, okay, I, can you be here Wednesday or Thursday? We'll, we'll try to work that out with your schedules.
Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Available Monday, Wednesday morning, definitely.
So Monday might be too soon, Wednesday could be a possibility. Your questions that you submit to me, make sure you label them, one candidate or the other, or both. All right, so, and again, I'll get those documents back to you. I would suggest that you print them off, either highlight or mark the questions that are most important to you individually, to make sure that those questions are answered during that time. Okay? We'll keep it close to seventy-five minutes again, and I can't think of, it'll be a ninety-day plan for the first twenty minutes, so it's gonna, we're just gonna open up with a presentation. They will be told no more than twenty minutes for this presentation, so if they go over it, you need to give them the merit or whatever, you can do that, but then the questions will come after that. Many times, it'd be great to have a setup like this, Bill, where we have a podium, because if people are presenting, most people stand up to present, but they don't sit down, it seems a little bit awkward to me to sit and do that. And then, they may be seated for the rest of the questions or something, so. They'll probably give you a handout of the ninety-day plan, so you'll have a hard copy. We'll make sure Val has that several days in advance, so it can be loaded on your system, so we won't have to worry about them bringing the laptop or anything, and then the system's not being compatible and so forth. So the tech gurus, I've always found out, use the district system because then it works.
And then after the interview, it's essentially, like you said, it just kind of goes single file, asking questions essentially until our time goes up?
Yeah. Kristin, I think, I think the best methodology I've seen a board president use is simply going right down the line, calling them, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Do you have any more questions? Do you have any more questions? But I don't let Mary ask six questions, and then Kristen seven, and then we run out of time, so we want to make sure we include everybody there too. Just realize the number of questions you're gonna have, we're not gonna get through all those. And they may not all be important to all of you. And again, presentation's gonna answer some of those.
So can we be Dave here and go?
I gotta drive home, I'm all for that.
I got something I gotta do.
Let's go.
Quick question, Mary?
We should bring one of those blowhard.
Well, I, no, I have a quick question, though. And we discussed this just briefly, does anybody have a thought on where the interviews are held, whether it be multipurpose room or out in the lobby? I just don't have a pulse.
I think wherever, wherever it's easiest, so we can project the candidates on a screen, so that the audience can watch their faces.
And the multipurpose room has two screens.
They're also gonna want to see the presentation, I mean, just the two slides, so we might need.
Okay. So then the multipurpose room would probably be best, right?
I think. We want to make sure we can put enough chairs there, and the lobby gives us more.
Lobby gives us more space, we just have to, I don't know if we had to.
Jeremy just has to work as manager on the presentation stuff.
And we have the meeting room presumably in that space, be directly up to.
Or the lobby.
Or.
The lobby's.
Or we can do the meeting room in the multipurpose room.
Right? Yeah.
So nobody has a strong preference, we can just kind of work through logistics.
Whatever font is, they can see the candidate's face, Jerry.
Well, that purpose strikes me as possibly useful.